Hey, we're, uh, you recorded it. If you could put your cell phones down and put them on night break, that'd be great.
Don't be that guy.
We were. I think we've all been. Good evening.
Hello.
Hello everyone.
Seven o'clock yet, chief, so.
Yep.
Perfect.
Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May 9th, 2019 at 7:00 PM at the Abington Town Hall, 500 Glen Lewis Way. First on the agenda is, um, old and new business, including, we don't have any minutes, so we go to reorganization of the board. First on the agenda would be, do we have a motion for chairman of the zoning board of appeals?
Sure, I'll make a motion to continue with the chair, Mr. Negreli, as the chairman of the zoning board of appeals.
Motion, do we have a second? A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Second, do we have a motion to appoint the vice chair of the board?
Do you want to make a motion?
Make a motion to continue with the vice chair.
All in favor?
I'll second.
All in favor?
I'm sorry.
Aye.
Aye. We're there.
We're there, we're done with that.
We don't have any minutes.
Do we want to do, yeah, we, I think we're actually technically supposed to have a clerk.
We should do a clerk as well, guys.
What?
A clerk?
Under section 12, you should, under 40, section 12, you should have a clerk.
What is the role of the clerk? What is the role of the clerk?
The clerk?
Um, they're supposed to keep the records, things like that, but.
Okay. Kind of like what she does.
Fair enough. Okay.
But it has to be a member of.
Yes.
Okay.
You have no choice.
I second that. I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
What happens, we have a three-person.
All right, thank you, I guess.
Two people took a step back.
All right, that stuff is done over there.
All right.
Very good.
Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hold, where's my, oh, it's this one, all right. Uh, hold public hearing Thursday, April 11th. First one is Batson, right?
Yes.
Petition of.
Yep.
There we go.
Continue. I'm going to just steal that one.
Is it? This is the.
There's two different ones.
Oh, that's a throw me off, all right. Petitioner James Batson, 15 Wilbur Street, Abington, for a finding under chapter 48, section 6, to allow existing one-family Quonset hut to be raised in one new family home to be constructed on a grandfathered lot at 440 Center Ave or variance, 17529, and special permit 17521A1, to allow one-family Quonset hut to be raised in a single-family home to be constructed, property located on assessors map 33, Lot 1, in the highway commercial zone.
Good evening.
Hello.
Good evening.
Yes, good evening.
Ladies and gentlemen, Sean Riley, 500 Washington Street, James Batson, returning once again. The board recalls, this is actually a continuation of last month's, where all the testimony was essentially presented, but we continue the hearing so that I could submit some requested documents to town council through the building department, which has been done. This, um, hearing here for 440 Center Avenue, that's the lot with the Quonset hut, and we're seeking the finding to allow him to take down the Quonset hut and build a single-family home according to the plans that we presented. For the board to grant the finding, there has to be a vote and a finding by the board that the proposed new house would not be substantially more detrimental than the existing house, and we would seek that vote.
Amy, did you get any information that you needed, or?
I did, um, and so, the, what he's asking for right now, the finding, um, does not have any impact on what he sent me, because that lot, um, that is, that is a single lot. So, and that, that's a developed lot, so you guys can make that finding.
Okay.
Um, the question that we have is the next lot over.
The vacant one?
Yeah, so if you want to make that finding, you can.
Okay. So, are we, uh, voting on, um?
You're just voting on, um, I would, I would just vote on Lot 108.
Two separate votes?
Can we call it Lot 108?
Yeah.
What number is that?
The address is 440 Center Avenue.
So, I would just, I would just make a motion on 440 Center Ave, right now.
Okay, and, and again, that's already a piece of property that already has a, a home on it.
Correct.
So, okay.
And, and what we're looking at is, are we looking at a variance here, or we have a special permit?
Nope, we're looking at.
Just a finding.
Just a finding.
It's just a tear-down?
Yep.
Rebuild, okay, fine, all right, very good.
Yep. Single-family house to a single-family house.
Okay.
Yep.
What were you saying?
Oh, no, I was just, because it was, they had the alternative, or variance, or special permit, we're just sticking with the finding.
Yes, so, the only thing that we're going to put in the decision is a finding.
Yep.
So, um, so what I would say is that, um, I would withdraw your request for a special permit and a variance.
Upon the grant of the finding, I will. Right, I mean, that's, I wouldn't need it, wouldn't want.
You don't need it, yeah.
Right.
You don't need it, in any, in any event.
Yeah, I agree, do you want me to do it first, I mean?
Yeah, I would, because you have to do it before they close, and they can't vote until they close.
I would ask the board to vote to allow me to withdraw our request for the setback variances and the special permit, because the finding is all we need.
Okay, the board agree?
Sure.
Yes.
So, you would, you would vote to allow the?
Make a motion to allow the petition.
Do we have to open it up to the floor at all, in this, in this?
Uh, for the withdrawal, no.
Okay, I mean, okay, all right.
You do not.
We just don't want to mess up the small stuff.
I know.
All right.
So, yeah, no, for the withdrawal, you don't have to.
Okay, all right.
It's a procedural matter.
So, I will second your motion to allow the petitioner to withdraw.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now, you're discussing the, just the finding.
Okay, so, the find, do we all agree on the finding?
I think it's pretty straightforward.
Okay, all right, so, so make a motion.
This has to be, this has to, this part has to open to the board, I mean, to the floor, in case anyone wants to say anything.
Right, so this, but we're, we're, just to be clear, it's 440 Center.
Yes, just 440.
All right, open it up to the floor, anybody have any questions about that property? No? Okay, I'll close it to the floor, bring it back to the board, uh, if you want to make a motion.
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the finding under chapter 48, section 6, to allow existing one-family Quonset hut to be raised in a new one-family home to be constructed on a grandfathered lot at 440 Center Avenue. The property is located on assessors map 33, Lot 1, in the highway commercial zone.
As a finding, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
I will second that.
I'm sorry, do we need the language in to specifically find that?
Yep, that it's not more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Not substantially more detrimental.
More detrimental to the neighborhood.
Go ahead.
And the board has found that the, um, the proposal will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yep. One.
So, with regard to 430 Center Street, um, he is claiming an isolate, the isolated lot protection, and.
Amy, I'm sorry, they haven't opened that yet, should we open?
Oh, sorry, no, it's all one, I thought.
It is all one.
We, we separated them.
Oh, it's two separate, oh, no, I'm sorry.
Since, since we voted on one.
That's done.
We'll, we'll bring up the second one then.
Thank you.
Bill, do you want to?
Abington Zoning Board of Appeals, we hear the petition of Batson Realty Trust, 15 Wilbur Street, Abington, in lieu of determining the lot as grandfathered under chapter 48, 6, for frontage, lot width, lot area, and side yard setback, variances 17529, and a special permit 17521A1, to allow a single-family home to be constructed at 430 Center Ave, property located on assessors map 32, Lot 88A, in the highway commercial zone.
Okay, so, so we have the right property, correct? That's the one we're talking about, correct?
430, it's 107, Lot 107.
Okay, 107.
In the, on the original 1908 subdivision.
430.
Yep.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
Now, let's talk about that one.
So, on this one, um, he's claiming the isolated lot protection, so he has to prove that there were no abutting lots in 1954, when, when this lot became non-conforming, which just coincidentally was when zoning was enacted in Abington. Um, the lot became non, became non-conforming, and so, what he has to show is in 1954, that the lot was not held in common ownership with any of the surrounding lots, any of the abutting lots. So, um, Attorney Riley has done that.
Okay.
The only thing is, um, his certification is missing a, one of the lots, 104, which is the rear, the lot to the rear. So, this is not actually something that would actually come before the ZBA, this is something that would, um, that the building inspector would determine, so, all of this information should be, should have been submitted to the building inspector, the building inspector would have then made that call, or, would have sent it to town council, we would have then looked over everything, and, and then the building permit could have been issued as of right. He combined them because, because of the finding, so.
Okay.
It makes, you know, it makes sense, but, um, so, I think that what we can do is, we can, um, you can either, you can make a motion that, um, the, that the law, that it's an isolated lot contingent upon Attorney Riley submitting a certification, an attorney certification.
That'll be approved, if he does do that?
Yep.
And, if I could, we, we also asked for a special permit only for lending purposes, we talked about this briefly last year, uh, last month, probably last year. It's a single-family house in the, in the highway commercial zone, my concern is, when they go to sell it, anybody who looks at the title is going to go, how the heck did you put, how'd you get a single-family house in a highway commercial zone, or, if you look on the use chart, says you need a special permit? And we can go at length and explain to them, chapter 48, section 6, but if the board would be inclined to grant the special permit, it eliminates that whole discussion, Marshall doesn't have to justify it to the next buyer, or bank, or whatever, it's on record. I think it's easier for everyone to do that, and I would ask your consideration to do that.
But what would they issue the special permit, what section, under what section?
21, uh, 17521, for the use chart.
Yep.
Just, if you look at it right now, it says.
A single-family house is allowed.
By six, sorry, section 6, but if you, if someone were to do their research, they're not going to buy this house, or the lender's going to build on it, wants a zoning certification, they're going to see, well, the use chart says highway commercial needs a special permit, you don't have a special permit, and I'm going to say.
I see what you're saying, yeah, okay. So, he, yes, so, the, the use is not allowed as of right?
We're just trying to look at.
It's only allowed as of right because of the isolated lot.
So, that would make it a special permit that we need?
So, do they still need the variance?
They need it, but it would just.
Okay, so, no variance?
So, this affects nothing with the old, uh, thing that was brought in front of us?
No, he cannot, he can't combine them and put up a big thing, no.
Okay, all right, okay, all right.
Absolutely not.
All right, so, we're looking for.
So, you've given, you've given, um, you've given a finding for a one-single-family house on 440, and now, you're giving a special permit for a house on 430, one-single-family house?
On, on 430?
Yes, because under, under section 6, the fourth paragraph, it's only for a single-family residential.
Okay, all right. All right, um, are we good, do you want me to open up the floor, or do you have any questions?
So, as a result, um, it strikes me that we need to grant, do we need to grant the variances in terms of the side yard setbacks?
No.
You don't?
Because it's.
Because it's the isolated lot.
Okay, so that trumps setbacks, got it, thank you.
Anything else, guys? All right, I'll open up to the floor, uh, any questions on this, or concerns? Okay, close it to the floor, all right, so if we could make, um.
So, I, I, I think the, the board can, um, can issue a special permit for a single-family residence at 430 Center Street upon the receipt of a attorney certification from Attorney Riley for lots 104, 106, and 108. It's, those lots are in a 1908 subdivision.
Oh, they're, the ones that's around, okay, all right.
Abutting lots, that's better.
Abutting lots.
Sorry, that's better.
Okay, you want to make a motion?
Sure. Um, I'll make a motion to approve the petition of Batson Realty, Realty Trust, 15 Wilbur Street, Abington, for a special permit under 17521A, to allow a single-family home to be constructed at 430 Center Street, contingent upon receipt of an attorney certification for abutting lots. The property is located on assessors map 32, Lot 88, in the highway commercial zone.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and attorney, they don't have to make any decision about the isolated lot, that's from, we'll talk to Marshall, he'll explain that to you.
Once you submit the certification.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If being after 7:05, the Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hear the petition of Nancy E. McDonald, 8 Hemlock Lane, Abington, for a special permit under 17532I, legalize existing in-law apartment at 8 Hemlock Lane, property located on assessors map 65, Lot 74, in the R20 zone.
Okay, this has no bearing on the SOR system.
Right.
Just throw that out there. How you doing?
I'm just here to legalize my apartment, we purchased the house and it had an apartment.
Yeah, it's an in-law apartment, yep.
An in-law apartment in it, and, and I live in the in-law apartment, and my grandson lives in the main house.
Okay.
Okay. So, we see you submitted that on May 15th, 2007, um, the property was granted, um, permission was given to construct an in-law apartment in that property.
Yes.
And, basically, just so you know, whenever there's a new owner, the property has to get recertified, in addition, you have to sign an affidavit every year with the building inspector's office, saying that you have a, a family member living in it, so.
And, refresh my recollection, there's no requirement that Marshall, in any way, I mean, this was already granted, so, the building inspector doesn't have to look at anything else in there, make any other determinations for it.
To me, it looks like it's already been.
I wouldn't believe so.
Signed off on.
Sure.
Built. There you are.
Yeah.
All right, any questions, guys? All right, um, any concerns, bring it to the, to the floor, any concerns on this property, any questions? All right, bringing it back to the board.
Straightforward.
Yeah. Now, given the prior granting of the special permit, um, and the change in occupancy, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit under 17532I, to legalize existing in-law apartment at 8 Hemlock Lane, property is located on assessors map 65, Lot 74, in the R20 zone.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All set.
Thank you.
You have to submit some paperwork to Marshall, I'm pretty sure, right? Or?
They'll, they'll send it out if they have to do anything.
Okay, all right, so you have paperwork.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care.
All righty, moving right along. Uh, Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hear the petition of Charles and Leanne Reed, 284 Linwood Street, Abington, for variance under 17529, divide the property at 284 Linwood Street into two separate lots, Lot A, 20,751 square feet, and Lot B, 20,050 square feet, property is located on assessors map 13, Lot 13, in the R40 zone.
Okay, this proposal, locate assessors map, land 13, Lot 13, substitute, um, system development fees that must be paid prior to building permit sign-off. Okay, how you doing?
Uh, we seek a variance on square footage to create two lots on, um, this property. Right in the neighborhood, we have Crossman Circle, where there's 10,000 square foot lots, uh, I kind of believe that this kind of would complete the neighborhood, in a sense, and it would help out Charles and his family as well.
We're hoping that we can, that my daughter could, could build a house on, on this other 20,000 square feet. We, we took these pictures to kind of show that, uh, the house that we would put there would look like it belongs in this neighborhood. Um, the neighborhood's about 20 years old, and we have a lot of neighbors here in support of this, um, I don't think that there's going to be a, a lot of people that oppose it, but they have a chance to do so, and we just hope you would consider this, and, um, let's just be able to do this for my daughter, and, and son-in-law, and grandson.
Baby to come.
Baby to come, um, also, uh, as my wife and I get older, I, I've been diagnosed with RA, and it's getting really hard to take care of this property at the size it is now, and, um, they'll be helping us, so we'll be helping them, and, we've been on, the Reeds have been on this piece of property since the 1940s. These is here, uh, that's the house right next to us, my brother lives there, so, um, we'll just hope that you would consider this, I know this is only the first step, but, uh, I believe it's the first step that we need to take, and, uh, I hope you'll consider it.
Do you know what the zoning is for Crossman Circle?
I'm sure it's special.
It's, uh, it's R40 with a, um, it was granted for a 40B, I believe.
40B, right here, R40, it's R40, yeah.
Yes.
40B, okay.
So, what do we have for that?
So, you need 40,000?
Yeah, R40 is a, is basically a zone with one acre lot.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, we're trying to, to split it in half, with, with the new house having an, an address on Crossman Circle, frontage on Crossman Circle.
And when you seek a variance, it's a higher standard, it's a higher hurdle to overcome, um, you need to prove a hardship, um, in terms of the property itself, financial shape, topography, soil conditions, is it going to be more detrimental to the neighborhood? Um, and, I always forget the third one, line. Um, and, and, you know, is it basically, you know?
You said it, more detrimental.
Yeah, you got it.
You got it. Yep, you got them all.
Um, you know, so part of it is, we ask, you know, what is the hardship to divide the lot, as it's being used currently, for it's, you know, it's zoned properly now, so you're asking us to break the zoning, so we ask what the hardship is.
Well, well, the hardship has to do with, with basically my failing health and, and the ability to take care of the lot as big as it is.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, uh, if, if, if they were able to do that, they could help us, you know, we'd help each other, but they would help us with the lot, and, uh, maybe we could stay and live there even longer, maybe we'll go another quarter, you know?
Sure.
But, um, certainly, certainly, it's not something that I like to talk about, but it's something that's happened to me. Uh, so, it's, it's getting harder to live there, so that's the hardship, and this will help.
Sure, and I can, I can certainly appreciate that situation, um, but, I mean, legally, the requirement that we're looking for is a hardship related to the land, I mean, otherwise, we would just have sort of people coming in, expressing their personal situations, and we would have to make a determination whether or not that qualified, so, it's, it's what the status of the land is, as opposed to the individual applicant, so that's what we're looking at.
The hardship should relate to the shape, soil conditions, or topography of the land itself, that's what the hardship has to relate to, in order for a variance to be granted. It's not an easy thing to do.
Right.
But, that's where, that's where you really have to make your argument.
And you said Crossman was an R40? Just.
Well, this side is, I don't know what the other side is, how could this be R40 on this side? I mean, are they, are they?
That was a special permit.
Yeah, it was a 40B, comprehensive permit.
Oh, really? Okay, okay, all right.
Gotcha.
So, that's where you're really stuck in the, you're really stuck. That's.
That, nothing, that's, yeah.
I mean, that's, that makes it all, like a ball of wax, yeah.
So, on the one hand, to grant it, it would be in keeping with the neighborhood.
Well, yeah, I mean.
You know.
But, it's.
But.
The other, this is a different, this is.
This is a different neighborhood.
In order to give, in order to grant it, we have to, you know, it has to be more than just in keeping with the neighborhood, it has to be the other prongs of, of the variance.
I, I, you know, I feel like this, this house would certainly not be a detriment to the values of the other properties around it, um, neighborhood people.
Well, I mean, it's just, it's just, it's just the way it's, you know, how it's zoned, it's, what's, we, we've come into a lot of, uh, projects like this, and, um, you know, one part is zoned differently than the other across the street.
Right.
So, it's, um, tough one. I mean, you look at some of these houses, I mean, it's squeezed right in.
Yeah, 10,000 square foot lots. One second, sir.
When we first lived in there.
Uh, we, you, you go, yeah, we have to open up, I'm sorry, we have to open up the floors. Um, anybody else, have anything else up here? Amy, do you have anything?
I don't, I.
Okay.
Would agree with him, you guys.
Okay, all right, all right, so now, I'll open up to the floor, so if you're going to speak, if you could just, uh, say your name and your address, um.
Yep.
All right.
Do I scan that?
It's up to you, it's fine, you can.
I'm a little nervous.
That's okay, don't worry about it.
Um, my name's Leanne Reed, I am child of both, um, married mother, grandmother, one child, another one on the way, um, we moved in many years ago, when he lived next door, that whole area was all woods, and, at one time, um, you know, without us really knowing about it, all of a sudden, you would probably be able to find out the meaning, the Crossman Circle just popped up on us, and I, I'm trying to understand the difference between an R zone 40 on this end, and then what they were allowed to do, and it's for a special clearance.
Of course, we weren't on the board then, and, and, was it 40Bs, is that what you said?
Yes.
They, they can, it's really difficult to stop a 40B, to be honest with you.
And, I want to say that I'm glad it wasn't stopped.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, no, it was not a neighborhood, our children grew up on it, I just would like to see my daughter be able to do that, and, in the way that, that that is zoned, you know, they're 10,000 square foot lots, um, us turning, the piece of property, I mean, it would, it's woods right now, it's not really, you know, whatever we have to do to take care of it.
Yeah.
And I understand you saying that's not a project, but, with all the, I, I just don't, I guess I'm trying to understand what the special permit is doing at 40B, and trying to get a variance so that we, we can split our lot, so that she could also be on Crossman Circle, so it would be only needing one variance, but I don't know.
No, it's okay, I did, like I explained, though, it's two different, it's two different animals here, we're talking, uh, there are two different zonings here. 40B is, uh, it's hard to stop, and, and they're built, and they're built a certain way, and that's the way it is, but, this is, this has to be, in your zoning, uh, 40, uh.
40,000.
But this is, this has to be, in your zoning, forty, R40 is an acre lot. Am I correct?
Yeah.
So it was done many years ago, and this is, this is why you're in front of us, because this side, the side of the street is different from this side. And that's, that's the reason why you can't just, you know, judge the two. Because this project came in, and it was, it came in the way it is. They built it totally different than what you have. It's all about zoning, it's all about R40s and R30s.
And you really can't compare it to a 40B, because a 40B by state statute is allowed for, to promote affordable housing.
Right, exactly. Different animal.
Completely.
Yep.
However, this is going to promote a little bit of affordable housing, too.
So it has to be restricted, affordable housing, unfortunately.
Restricted affordable housing.
There has to be a restriction on the deed, et cetera, so. And you have to be, you have to go through the state mass housing.
It's a little complicated.
If you stay around, we're gonna deal with one later.
Stick around, you can see what we get. Any other questions?
Could you give us some advice on, is there anywhere that we could be able to do this? Is there another?
So what I'm just looking at, what's allowed in R40, is by special permit, you could do an in-law apartment. And a special permit is a lower hurdle to get over.
Just to bring it up, I mean...
Right. I mean, and there are restrictions in terms of size and square footage and all those sorts of things that you can look up or speak to the building inspector about, you know, in terms of that. But that's, that's the only thing under the R40 use table. You know, special, yeah, accessory apartment is a special permit.
And I can understand your frustration, because you're looking right across the street, you see that. But again, different zonings, different, different animals.
I mean, we're, we're very happy with the neighborhood and the people in it, and, you know, and then growing up and everything, it was very great. But for these kids to try to go out and buy a house...
I agree, yep.
Yeah, Abington's nuts right now, especially with the new school.
Every town.
Stuff's going like that, it's ridiculous.
But...
Is all of Glenwood Street 40B, I mean, bought with 40R zone?
I don't...
I wouldn't, I wouldn't know right from, I'd have to look it up, it's just...
Is it in that?
It can't be, because of what's going on at Beals Farm.
At the what?
Beals Farm. There's three houses in a field, and then a house on the other side of Beals Farm, which is a quarter mile down the street.
Oh, yeah, that's right, that's right. I think that is R30.
It is R30, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Again, a different zone. I mean, it's, it's what our people put in the books, the laws, it's all in there. That's what we have to go by.
Your side of Groveland Street is R40.
I'm sorry?
Your side of Groveland Street is R40, the other side is R30, so.
I have one question.
Are you done?
I, I'll run.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I was just wondering if there's...
You have to say your name and your address.
I'll collect agreement on three Crossman Circles, across the street from that proposed property that they would build. I was just wondering if there's any type of possibility of a petition list or, you know, a list of people that agree with it, the neighborhood, that how you could ever change it from 40B to 30B, they live right across the street here?
Well, I think that would take a bylaw change.
Yeah.
At town meeting, yeah.
Public opinion...
I'm sorry if I go off. Basically, what I'm hearing is these families trying to stick together and build the house, and keep their family together, which is pretty cool. And for them coming into our street with a lot of people here that live in the neighborhood that are here to support them, I feel like that maybe should come to something.
You know, it does, and, you know, public support for a project or public support against a project weighs heavily on our opinions. I mean, we're all Abington residents, you know? Not from, you know, Marshfield or something like that, but... That said, you know, we are, we need to do specific things that we're entrusted to do by the selectmen. There have been times when, in the past, when a project was not zoned for what it needed to be, and the property owners then went and spoke to the selectmen about rezoning that particular area. I mean, when Cape Cod Lumber moved, that was, that was an example where it was, you know, it was something we couldn't grant, because it was outside of our purview, and they had it rezoned from whatever. But unfortunately, it took seven months, a year, or something like that. You know?
And I think we worry, we have to worry as a board that, you know, these zones, zoning laws are put in place, and if we give someone the right to do it, then the next person in the neighborhood's gonna wanna do it, and then so on, and so on, and so forth.
Our decisions have to stand up in court.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I mean, the case law, I mean, I'm just reading here. I mean, the cases that turn on the issue of hardship are notable, but notable for describing what does not constitute a hardship. For example, to well-settle that personal hardship. However, heart rendering is not a proper factor for consideration. They cite personal health, children with multiple handicap, low-income petitioners. So I mean, these are things that, I understand that it would help your own situation, but these are things that we really can't consider for the purposes of granting hardship. I mean, we're precluded from doing it by, you know, the courts and case law.
Hardship is topography, soil?
Soil shape.
Something to do with the land specifically.
Soil conditions, topography, shape, shape of a lot.
Go ahead.
I have a question. So the question I have, I understand that the zoning is there for a weekend. I think that one of the major reasons for that is to keep property values up. I think we've kind of demonstrated that it wouldn't, you know, be causing any detriment to the neighborhood around them. We have a lot of support for that. So, and I think what's neat about this particular lot, rather than anybody else in an R40 zone, is that it abuts an area that has already been granted for a variance. And I don't understand the laws about how that variance was granted exactly. But I do think that it's a special circumstance, because it's exactly abutting twenty and ten thousand square foot lots. It would look more in place with the rest of the neighborhood if this was granted. And so, what I'm wondering is that, can it absolutely not be granted based off a special circumstance that has to be a hardship present? Or is that a factor that needs to be considered?
The hardship has to be...
Yeah, there has to be hardship established.
What's an example of a topical hardship? I just don't know what that is.
So there's, there's cases where a majority of the lot is wetlands, and so you can get a variance to put your house closer to the setback, because you can't put it within the wetlands. There's also cases that, where there's lots that are very, that are very strangely shaped. And so the only place to cite the house would be in an area where you can't meet all the setbacks, things like that. It's almost, I don't, I really don't know of any cases that would allow for splitting of a lot to create a new lot for a variance. I don't recall any.
And you can't put two houses on one lot in this town, too, so.
You know, I agree that what the petitioner is asking is not more detrimental to the neighborhood. I mean, to me, that's easy to see, but that's only one prong of what you need to prove. You know, so like, you're one for three. But you gotta be three out of three in order for it to be approved.
And I, yeah, and I agree that some of these house placements don't look fair, if you will. I mean, there were some that were pretty close to the lot land. And again, this is something that was approved not by this board, so.
I don't think that that was approved by the zoning board at all.
That, right there, that house right there?
No, it wasn't. It was a special, you, I think you were, you were probably at some of the meetings way back when, it was 1997, 1996?
Has it been there that long?
Yeah, yeah.
Twenty years, twenty years, yeah.
Wow.
We had no say of it coming in, you know?
Yeah. Yeah. And again, we have to, we have to rely on what the law says and the books say and bylaws say, and there are reasons for it. Now, does anyone else want to add to this? Go ahead, sir.
My name's Paul Loyall, eight Crossman Circle. I live right beside the back of their lot where the house was going. It's a perfect spot for the house they wanted. If there's anything he can do, would appreciate it. The whole neighborhood, we've been there twenty years, the whole neighborhood's been there twenty years. The reeds have been great neighbors, and the house would be perfect, because it's their house facing Groveland, you come down Crossman, and all our splits are on the left, right? And they're gonna be on the left beside my house. And there's plenty of room, there's plenty of frontage. One more house.
Setbacks are there.
One more house.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Couldn't that be considered some sort of a hardship where that 40B or that Crossman Circle was put there under special variances also, right? Is there a special?
It had to be special permit.
Comprehensive.
Comprehensive permit.
Comprehensive.
Does that...
I don't think so.
I mean, the only thing we could potentially do is allow you to withdraw the petition if you wanted to go back and do additional research to see if, to see if there's some, you know, avenue that you could pursue. Because if we do vote on it, then, you know, and if it's denied, then you'd be precluded from...
If we deny it. Was it someone else who wanted to stand up? I'm sorry.
Tammy Reed, she's on into Glenwood Street, also abutting. It's the niece. There's no reason we shouldn't be able to split the family property and have her live right there. I mean, it wouldn't affect anybody in the neighborhood. She's been here her entire life. She needs to be there to help her father. She needs to be there to help her mother. I'm gonna be there to help me eventually, you know? It's a family lot. It really should be kept, in my opinion, in the family to help everybody else. And all of the neighbors agree.
No, it's great that you all came and supported. That's, that's a great thing. Anyone else?
But we should withdraw, right?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to get everyone to voice their...
Yeah.
Before we go into that. Go ahead.
Vicki Doyle, the Crossman Circle. So is there any way that we can change the, like a 40B to regular housing? How do we go about doing that?
I mean, that's changing the whole zone for that area.
You'll lose units.
Something that just, no...
FortyBs are in perpetuity, correct?
Yeah, well, you'd have to change the zoning for that.
Right.
Yes. What you're looking for is a zoning change.
Yeah, you're looking for a zoning change by law.
So if you go at annual town meeting, it's ten registered voters, and you bring it to the planning board and see if the planning board will support it. And then you bring it to town meeting. If it's special town meeting, you need a hundred registered voters.
So there's, I mean, there is ways.
There's that option.
Well, there's been done, believe me. Believe me, it's been done, this board has seen it done.
They didn't know anything about this. And, you know, the builder that built in that, our homes, was not a town builder. He was other town. And he treated us poorly. And now, you know, twenty years later, they wanna build a house. It just doesn't seem fair. So like, give them some options.
Well, I think we are. I think we're actually giving them good information. I mean, there are, I've, we've seen, if you've been to town meeting, they have changed, they have changed zoning, so.
So you have a twenty, an hour twenty for this one lot?
No, you would do, you wouldn't do just that one lot. You would, that would be spot zoning, so you'd have to do an area.
Like from Groveland, maybe, to Crossman?
Whatever you think is, makes sense.
Okay.
You'd have to wait till next year.
Probably too late for it now.
Annual town meeting is in a week, so you'd have to wait till next year.
Or is, do you guys do a special?
We haven't done a special in a long time.
Were we all set on the floor?
I guess I'd like to withdraw.
Well, let me just, let me just close to the floor.
You wanna withdraw?
Okay, thank you, thank you for your support. We do appreciate it. But you do have to understand where we're at, too, that these are the bylaws in town. And I can see exactly what you're saying. It's not like we don't see it, but again, different situations right across the street. And we get it a lot, so, all right? It's nothing personal, just a, just a reminder. All right, let's bring it back to the board. All right, so.
We'd like to withdraw without prejudice.
Okay, and...
I'll make a motion to accept the petition as withdrawal without prejudice.
Okay.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so you have some options.
Okay, all right.
You can understand what we're talking about, okay? Something, do we think, sign anything, or we're good with it? Nothing aside? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, where are we at?
It's a big package. We gonna take a couple of minutes here, or can we take a couple of minutes and talk to you? Or is that the question?
You're gonna only talk to me.
Can we take a couple of seconds, go on the other room and talk?
No.
Okay, I'm just...
Sorry.
We just wanted to know that.
Uh, do we need to officially close the public hearing?
Yeah, what, what, hold on.
We did.
No, sorry, this...
Oh, that one?
I mean, this.
Yeah.
Or no, we're still...
We drew it, so now we're all set.
I do have one thing I'd like to put out there, it's another bill.
Oh, joy. We have a bill from Tetra Tech to the Abington Zoning Board of Appeals for plan review regarding stormwater report, traffic studies, comments, et cetera, dated from 3/25 to 4/9/2019, in the sum of $4,617.60. Like to make a motion to submit this for payment.
Sure. And just to clarify, that is being paid by sums deposited by the petitioner, not from the Abington Town Funds.
Correct.
And for the record, it is invoice number 514-34907.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. We didn't forget it. All right, Amy.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so I sent you guys a draft decision that has Sean's comments in red line. So we do need to go through this, because I did have a few outstanding questions that I couldn't really even understand my own notes. So we're gonna...
Well, it's been a long process.
Probably be adding something. It has been a long process. So basically, the decision starts with the date the application was filed, the name of the applicant. The applicant shall include its successors and assigns, the location of the property, the approval that was requested is 40B, the members participating, the members voting, the date the hearing was opened, the date the hearing was closed, and the date of the vote, which I put for tonight. If we can't come to a vote tonight, then we'll, we'll change that. So for procedural history, we have the comprehensive permit for 144 age-restricted units. We have sixty-four in Building A, eighty in Building B. Thirty-six of those units will be affordable. And it's a hundred and twelve one-bedroom units and thirty-two two-bedroom units, totaling a hundred and seventy-six bedrooms. They're proposing two hundred and twenty-seven parking spaces. Originally, they proposed two hundred and twenty-nine, and then during one of their plan changes, it was reduced by two. So now it's two twenty-seven. The property consists of seventeen point four acres, only three point one of those are buildable. So that results in forty-six units per buildable area. That information...
The acre area, that last one?
Oh, probably acre, you're right, sorry.
Three point one acres?
Three point one, yeah, you're right, three point one acres. And that is from the project eligibility letter. And then we go through the notice, the note, it was properly noticed. The public hearing, when we list all the public hearings, there was January 17th, which was continued without testimony, so I note that. And then I said that the board requested the hearing remain open to work with the applicant on resolving unanswered questions. But by letter dated April 5th, 2019, the applicant demanded that the hearing be closed on April 9th, 2019. And then I note that the board did secure all appropriate extensions to continue the hearings, to extend the time to act. On number four, I wrote that we hired Tetra Tech and exactly, you know, what Tetra Tech reviewed. The, number five, the applicant funded Tetra Tech. Number six is the fact that the board notified all of the local boards, which is pursuant to 40B, we have to send this out to everybody. And that the plans, the next one is the plans that are going to be, the final plans, they're dated August 10th, 2018, with the final revision date of February 27th, 2019. And then the fact that everything, all the documents and exhibits that were received are on file. And so now for the findings, I separate these into groups. The first one is the jurisdictional requirements, which, so, so this is a little unusual, this case, because the project eligibility letter usually states that the applicant is a qualified applicant. In this case, the project eligibility stated that the applicant is a qualified applicant, however, that the applicant is not a limited dividend organization. They don't have any doubt that they will become one. So it was a little strange. I've never run into that before, that I've never run into the state actually acknowledging the fact that they're really not a limited dividend organization. So I, further down in this, I have a condition stating that they have to become a limited dividend organization, so that's why.
And what does that involve? What is that, exactly?
They would, it's basically, we, you can do it a whole bunch of different ways. I think the easiest way to do it is they set up an agreement with, with DHCD, and it limits their profits to 20%.
Okay.
So essentially, they can't go forward without becoming one. But I did find it strange that DHCD noted at this, or Mass Housing noted at this time, and they haven't, and, I mean, I have five ongoing, and I checked all the PELs, and none of them had that. So, I don't know. It could just be who was reviewing it. So then, the statutory minimum for low and moderate income housing, Abington, So then, the statutory minimum for low and moderate income housing, um, Abington, um, as of the 2017 SHI, which is the most recent, um, Abington has 7.6, so therefore, we are under 10%. I did put, because Bill had mentioned it a couple of times, I put that the board does note that 101, 151 units are necessary to reach 10%. The subject development will provide 144 units, which is seven units short of attaining 10%. So.
So we still not?
Right.
We will not. And then the next paragraph, or affordable housing, I, just that the 25% of the units will become affordable. There are, they have to be offered at rents that are affordable to families with a gross annual income that's equal to 80% of the area median income. So, um, the 36 of the 144 units will be affordable, but all 144 units will be counted on the SHI. And then I put that, the board finds there's a shortage of low and moderate income senior housing in Abington. And then, subject to the conditions of the decision, this, um, this project is consistent with local needs. For wetlands, there's, um, so, I had some conflicting technical information, and so did Sean, so we don't have an actual, real data, which would have been, this is why I like to leave these open, so the applicant can give us the real numbers, which we don't have. But I have approximately 14.3 acres of the property is unbuildable, the majority of which is covered by wetlands. There was, in two different places, in one place, it said that there was 14 acres of wetland, and another, and another, it said 10 acres of wetland. And so, I, I, I just changed it to 14.3 acres of unbuildable. The access to the development will traverse wetlands and buffer zone. There are two wetland cross, uh, crossings proposed with replication areas. The board, while the board acknowledges the severity of site constraints due to wetlands and potential impacts on resource areas, the board is hopeful that the conditions required herein will result in a project that would presumably avoid these impacts, which more appropriately balances the regional need for housing with local concerns. And if you guys don't agree with anything, let me know.
No, we'll, we'll go.
Okay. So, um, um, so cooperation of the applicant and reasoning of the decision, the project will be one of the largest in Abington, will result in the tall, um, result in the tallest buildings in town. The site constraints and potential traffic impact, impacts, both internal circulation as well as traffic on Plymouth Street were concerning for the board. Numerous issues raised by Tetra Tech were not resolved, and the board is forced to condition the resolution of said issues. And then, I go, I repeat how we wanted the, um, the board, we wanted the hearing to stay open.
Yeah, there's a typo on that line.
Where is that?
Stray open. Stray instead of stay open, on that fifth line.
Got it, thanks, okay. And then, with regard to cooperation, um, during the local review process, the applicant was directed to work with the butters regarding concerns and screening. The applicant met with Ada Butters and relocated the proposed sidewalk on the access road to accommodate 1009 Plymouth Street. And then I, I did put, the board has directed the applicant to work further with the owner of 1009 Plymouth Street with regard to screening. Is that your recollection? That was, that was in my notes?
No.
Because I, in my notes, I had that they moved the sidewalk, which was a good thing, but I think that we also directed them to work on screening.
Right, and, and we did have, the lady was there, and we talked to her about it.
Right.
And didn't Tetra Tech say something about they wanted the, the final landscape, just because if they wanted to put a rock there, or something like that, they wanted...
And we do, we do require the final landscape plan, yes.
Okay.
Okay, it's funny, 'cause my notes said rock, and I didn't know why. Engineering and stormwater, the stormwater system is comprised of storm tech, uh, storm tech, coal tech chambers. And then, based on recommendations from Tetra Tech, the board is requiring that the incorporation of isolator rows into the design, which is strongly recommended by storm tech technical representatives. For traffic, safety, and access, the traffic report supplied by the applicant concludes the project will not result in significant, um, project traffic-related impacts. Study area, um, chosen, um, were the two principal intersections, and the proposed project is estimated to generate 67 trips, 15 entering and 52 exiting during the weekday, and 82 trips, 52 entering and 30 exiting during the weekday evening, so the first one was morning. This was added by Sean. The applicant shall submit a revised traffic study incorporating revisions, additions, and corrections noted during the review process. The updated study shall be submitted with final plans. For internal, um, site circulation, um, so, I kind of went through the history of the plans, the re, the reiteration of the plans, I had three plan sets that I went through. So, um, as first presented, the access drive could not be constructed. So I should probably add, according to Tetra Tech. Okay. And then, um, so it's, the applicant proposed 24-wide travelway, four-foot sidewalk, immediate, um, bound immediately on both sides by retaining walls, in some areas, um, six feet, um, six feet in height. No space was provided for guardrail or curbing. The site plans were then revised by reducing the available traveled way from 24 feet to 22 feet. Tetra Tech recommended that the road, being the only access to the development, remain at 24 feet in width, as the road was depicted with no shoulder and was limited by guardrail on both sides. Site plans were modified to provide a one-foot offset to the face of the curb as requested. However, the roadway traveled with is unchanged to 22 feet. Additionally, the proposed wall system is shown without footings or foundation system and contemplates a guardrail mounting arrangement that may not be constructable as shown. I'm gonna also put, according to Tetra Tech. The project, um, is expected to generate 550 vehicle trips per day. Access drive, um, meets the description, generally meets the description of a minor street.
Can I ask you about that?
Sure.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but...
No.
Um, top of that page, is the 550 referencing when it's being, um, uh, used?
Per day.
Per day.
So the other, at the top of the page, it's just the peak hours.
Oh, okay, all right.
Got it.
Got it.
So that's the difference.
Right, it says the morning peak hours.
I missed that.
Right.
Um, so, uh, the minor, uh, street detail included in subdivision, um, regulations specifies a 26-foot curb-to-curb roadway width in a 52-foot right-of-way. The proposed access drive would have a four-foot narrow travel width, um, and is elevated above the wetland for approximately 550 feet. Given the road's limited overall width and length of the constrained elevated section, based on Tetra Tech's recommendations, the board is requiring a 20-foot, 24-foot curb-to-curb roadway width, and is requiring that the roadway be striped with two 10-foot travel lanes, each with a two-foot shoulder. Additionally, the board is requiring the walls and guardrails to be designed to meet AASHTO guidance. So I worked with Sean on that. Sean couldn't, couldn't necessarily come up with a way for them to construct the retaining walls, because, and it's also not his, it's not his job to do that. So we tried to find a way where we could condition the construction of those. So, so this is what we came up with. The applicant is proposing an emergen, uh, emergency access drive through property owned by the town. And so we are, the board is requiring a detailed plan of the proposed emergency access improvements approved by the Abington Fire and Police Chiefs, and documentation of right of, right-of-access prior to issuing a building permit. Fire Department provided written comments indicating satisfaction with the proposed layouts. This, I, I note that they only had one hydrant, um, 30, 300-foot of hose to access remote portions, um, so they, I note that the applicant added three additional hydrants, and the board is requiring an additional hydrant in the rear, for a total of five. Um, and then we're also conditioning the final plans, show all water service connections, um, and approved by the fire chief. The applicant is proposing to provide 227 parking spaces, which is a ratio of 1.57 per unit. The ITE publication Parking Generation 4th Edition for LUC 221, low mid-rise apartment, recommends a ratio of approximately two spaces per unit, and the zoning bylaw requires 282 So, I, I know that parking wasn't necessarily an issue to the board, so I just left it at 227.
Okay.
Based on the limited space between the two buildings, the board requires the circulation between the buildings be limited to one-way only, and the roadway be narrowed to provide additional sidewalk width adjacent to Building A. The final plans must confirm that emergency vehicles operated by the Abington Fire Department can freely circulate, circulate through the site. So that's highlighted because, um, I wasn't sure if we came to a, a, a decision on one-way traffic or not.
I thought between the two buildings...
Between the buildings, we'd have one-way.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
There's that bridge there, but we still agreed that it should be a one-way.
Okay, um, for water and sewer, um, the, I just reiterate the fact that they have, um, they got a letter from Water stating that they have the water, and then, um, I, I basically put in what Sean requested, which is the documentation in the form of a technical memorandum, clearly identifying, you know what, we should have that stamped, a technical memorandum, a technical stamped memorandum. We're, we identify the project demands, um, the current system capacity, um, potential impacts to a butters and users, all that, all that whole list that Sean went through at the last meeting. Um, and then the same, it's the same with sewer, and so provide, I will say stamped, technical stamped memorandum. So that's the same thing. So for the zoning, I went through, um, the zoning. The projects located are 30, so it has the following, um, the minimum lot area is 30, they have 744,005. Frontage is 110, they have 38. Lot width is 110, they have 38. This is on their, um, this is from their waiver requir, from their waiver request. I think their lot width is actually not 38. I think it's a lot more, because the lot with the definition, you're allowed to go into the lot further. They just basically copied frontage.
Okay.
So, I don't know, we'll get to that waiver when we get there.
Does it need to be changed, or later, or...
We can't change it, 'cause they closed the hearing. So we'll have to figure out if we can even grant a waiver for that or not. So, anyway. The front setback is 35, they have 998. Side setback is 20, they have 84. The rear setback is 30, they have 73. Height is 35, they have 46. Maximum lot coverage is 25, they have 21. So right now, they're only looking at three-dimensional variances, and possibly just two, which would be frontage and height.
Yeah.
Um, and then they, the next, um, the next statement is that they, basically, they're looking for a use variance, because multi-unit dwellings are not permitted in the R3 zoning district, so. And then, um, just a finding that for the issuance of a comprehensive permit, the board finds the project could not be built in accordance with the above requirements of the R30 zoning district. So that's the reason why they're here. These are just the, um, conditions of approval. The first two paragraphs are the, um, just the preamble, as to that they're doing 144 age, age-restricted units in two, three-story buildings, um, and that the comprehensive permit incorporated the request of relief from general bylaws, local subdivision control, Conservation Commission, Board of Health. They actually didn't request anything from Conservation Commission. I'll take that out. They didn't request a waiver from the Conservation Commission, um, so, okay. For administrative, um, the comprehensive permit is granted to Abington Investments LLC. It's required to be a limited dividend organization, um, and then, um, and it may not be transferred or assigned to any part, party without the approval of subsidizing agency and notice to your, to this board. And that's required under the regulations. Construction is to be carried out consistent with final plans, as defined herein, um, and that's just noting that final plan, so then I, I list the plans and the reports that we relied upon, which is, um, the table, um, we have a response letter, we have, um, the plans, we have the pre-development drainage plan, we have drainage report, and we have a tra, traffic, um, impact assessment. And then, uh, condition number two is the comprehensive permit is issued pursuant to the Mass Housing, um, project eligibility letter. Uh, number three is that, um, it, the 25% again, um, pursuant, or per, the subsidizing agencies, rules and guidelines, the affordable units shall be evenly dispersed throughout the project and shall be indistinguishable from the market rate units in the project. That's pretty easy with a, um, project such as this, 'cause they're apartments, so, from the outside, they don't look any different. And then, any fees associ, uh, that should be associated, not associates. So any fees associated with the rental units shall also be proportional and reduced for the affordable units. I don't recall, um, I didn't, I didn't recall any testimony regarding fees.
Right.
So, if there is any. I don't know if there will be. And then, um, prior to, um, any kind of clearing of vegetation, um, they have to comply with all other state and federal laws, order of conditions, um, Title V, if necessary, um, and then any local regulations that are not waived by this permit. So, um, the applicant's final plan shall incorporate, include the following, um, the additional fire hydrant, the access road showing a 24-foot curb-to-curb roadway width striped with two 10-foot travel lanes, each with a two-foot shoulder, a lighting and photometric plan showing proposed site light, lighting, which shall be dark sky compliance with no spillage onto abutting properties, and shall be prepared by a registered professional engineer. Architectural plans and elevations, a landscaping plan prepared by a Massachusetts licensed landscaping architect showing improvements on the project site and such improvements on a butters, parcels as agreed to by the applicant. Details of the trash and recycling plan shall be provided and approved by the Abington Board of Health. Water and sewer connections shall be sub, subject to review for consistency with this decision. Details of the proposed access roadway, including structural design of a wall system and guardrail system. Details of the, um, water system connection, which shall be looped through the site to limit potential for, um, disruption, and any other modifications required by this decision. The applicant shall prepare and submit final and detailed stormwater management plans in accordance with DEP stormwater management regs. They shall apply for an order of conditions. The board has the power at a public meeting without further public hearing to modify or amend the terms, um, to correct technical errors of the, of the comprehensive permit.
Can we go back to seven?
Sure.
Um, do we, I know there was some discussion about, uh, the width of the, the roadway in terms of the wetlands, and whether the limited site, or something like that?
Yeah, limited project.
Do we have to incorporate any of that into this?
No, they will apply for a limited project, in this instance.
Okay.
And it, and I, I think it's probable that they will, they qualify.
Okay.
So. I don't see that as being a hurdle for them. Number nine, um, this is in the event that they, that they seek a change. And then, starting the second sentence within 20 days, that is all literally cut and pasted from the regulations. So essentially, if they seek to modify this comprehensive permit, they have to file something written with you guys. You guys then have 20 days to determine if the, if the change is substantial or insubstantial. If it's insubstantial, they can just go ahead and make the change. If it's substantial, within 30 days, you guys have to open a public hearing, and then the whole process starts again. You have 180 days to go through the change and decide if you approve it or not. So that's all, that whole huge paragraph is just all that. All easements and covenants affecting the use of the site have been identified, um, such covenants and easements are identified on the plan of record. There, there's none, so, I, that I, there's just the, um, there's just the easement to the rear that I saw on the plan.
Is that included in, um, the emergency access roads?
No, 'cause they haven't given us that yet. They haven't given us the permission. They have to get permission.
Just a utility right now, right?
Yep. So, um, and then, um, number 11 is that it, this expires, um, within three years if they have not exercised it, so. And that's, that's, um, state law. They have to record it. On number 12, number 13, um, any, any transfer, again, has to be approved by the subsidizing agency and, and notice to you guys. 14 plans within 30 days, um, after the expiration of the appeal period, they have to provide the building, um, permit with four sets of full-size plans, and then two sets of reduced plans, um, one Mylar, and any, any of the recordable plans. Construction plans, not less than 30 days, uh, prior to the anticipated start of construction. They have to submit, um, the construction plans to the building department. And then, the approval of the building department shall not be unreasonably withheld. As-built plans, within 60 days of issuance of the final certificate of occupancy, we have to get some as-built plans.
Just on that one, Amy, should, instead of highway, should we have Department of Public Works?
Oh, yeah.
And I don't know, should you add in...
And I don't know, should you add in there the, the building fireworks? Should they get the copies as well?
Yes, you're right.
And the construction plans that included, they talked about where they were going to stage all the vehicles and that's incorporated into, okay.
Yep, everything, the staging is in there, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's further on.
Okay.
It's exciting.
And then, number seventeen, this is a, um, standard condition that we put in all of our fortyBs, which is the, um, we, we encourage them to file the digital copies of the plans if possible, and then list all of the, um, electronic media that are acceptable. That's really just to save paper. Number eighteen is that the applicant has to promptly pay the reasonable fees of the board's consultant. I think we still actually have money from the applicant in the, in the account, so I, that's not really an issue. And then, um, all consultant fees incurred prior to the issuance of this decision shall be paid by the applicant within thirty days after this decision is filed with the town clerk. So if, for example, the, um, that bill, if what we have in the account doesn't cover that bill, that last bill, he'll just have to give us the rest for the thirty days. I don't think that's a problem. Copies of all required legal documents, um, including but not limited to the regulatory agreements shall be submitted to the board, and if necessary, having some town council for review and comment prior to the issuance of a cer, certificate of occupancy. So, the reason why we put that there is because, um, before we used to have that the, all of the regulatory agreements and everything had to be approved by town council prior to the first building permit. Um, and that's not really realistic. So, in this, in this instance, we can let, they can build. And, and while they're building, we can review documents, so. The applicant shall provide the board with copies of any and all statements provided by the applicant to the subsidizing agent, um, regarding costs and revenues for informational purposes. And then again, they're required to be, an, an LDO, um, so, and then we'll get, we'll get, um, proof of that. The board and its agents can enter onto the property during construction. So, um, in B, so on condition number twenty-three, uh, for B, for housing, um, these all have to do with the, um, the affordable housing and the restrictions, et cetera. So, these are all standard, um, conditions that are in all of our KP laws, all of our fortyB, um, decisions. So, the first one is just that they're prepar, they're, um, so, this is another one where I had a question, my notes are conflicting. Um, they applied as a, as a fifty-five and over, and I recall in the first hearing when I mentioned that there's the DHCD, um, policy of restricting, uh, you can't restrict persons under eight, under eighteen to affordable units in a fifty-five and older. Mr. Carpenter said, fine, we'll change it to a sixty-two and over. But I never, I don't have anything in my file that states that it's a sixty-two and over. So I fashioned this to try and address both. The applicant is proposing the development shall be age restricted to persons over sixty-two years of age. And, and the other thing is that, as I was going through this, I don't think that, I'm not sure there's a need for a hundred and forty-four units for over sixty-two. It makes more sense to be over fifty-five. But that's just what I thought. So, um, the applicant is proposing the development shall be age restricted to persons over sixty-two years of age. All dwelling units in the project shall be subject to a restriction requiring that there be a resident, that should be a resident? No, residence.
In residence, right?
In residence, yeah, sorry. At least one person who has reached the age of sixty-two referred to as the qualifying occupant. No unit shall be occupied by any person under the age of eighteen, except that, I, persons under the age of eighteen shall be permitted as visitors to a unit on a temporary basis not to exceed three months in any nine-month period. So that's a standard, that's standard what we put for sixty-two and over, but I just am not sure if this is sixty-two or fifty-five. So, I then put, if the project will be restricted to persons age fifty-five and older, persons under the age of eighteen shall be permitted to reside in an affordable unit as defined herein as a member of the qualified occupant's household, and the affordable unit is defined in the next condition. So, and I have an extra period there. I didn't know if you guys wanted to, um, require that a written statement from the, um, applicant, whether it be sixty-two or fifty-five, be submitted to this board prior to construction or, or something?
Do we have anything in the records for that? Anything? Anybody have anything?
Well, my recollection is what Amy said.
Yes, we never got anything.
They did bump it up to sixty-two.
Yeah. But that was verbally, we never got anything in writing.
Well, may as well ask for clarification.
Okay.
Yeah, in writing.
Okay, so I'll add something in about, they have to submit something in writing, whether it be fifty-five or sixty-two. And then, we do the definition of the affordable unit, which is, um, from the state statute, it's twenty-five percent and it's, um, um, it shall remain eligible to be included in the town's subsidizing housing inventory as maintained by DHCD, along with the total number of units as a rental project. So the applicant has to notify the board when building permits are issued for and cooperate with the preparation of request forms to add the units to the town's SHI. The affordable units shall permanently remain affordable units for so long as the project is not in compliance with the town zoning bylaw, or for the longest period allowed by law, if longer, so that the affordable units shall continue to serve the public purpose for which this comprehensive permit was authorized under chapter fortyB, section twenty to twenty-three. To the extent allowed under fortyB in the regulations, um, the applicant shall provide a preference category for Abington residents, their parents and children, and for employees of the town of Abington in the initial rental of the affordable units. I thought about taking out children, I mean, parents, but then I realized that there could be a, a sixty-two-year-old with like an eighty-something, right?
Hmm, hmm.
Does that make sense?
That does make sense, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So I left it in. So, um, the way that this preference is implemented is through the lottery system and the, um, and the marketing efforts. The, um, the applicant will have a lottery agent and, and the subsidizing agency will oversee that, so, um, the costs associated with the marketing of units and everything like that is borne by the applicant. I know you're, well, so Dan Bailey's sending me emails as we're going through this. I know that, but your application to the zoning board of appeals says fifty-five. So that's why I'm confused, there's two different ages. So to the extent allowed and the regulations promulgated thereunder, um, wait, I already have that one, sorry, we're on twenty-seven. Oh, this is just, this goes, this goes more to the local preference, that, um, the app, that we acknowledge that, um, that they have to provide, um, evidence satisfactory that for the need for local housing, for, um, for local residents. That's, that would be very easy for them to do with, they could get that information from the senior center. They have to, um, enter into a regulatory agreement with Mass Housing, um, which will, detailed restrictions, um, and this is, this is all in accordance with the regulations. Um, I have some spacing issues there. They purport, uh, provide, um, they have to provide the board with all of the executive documents, um, from Mass Housing. And then, the regulatory agreement has to, um, has to contain the following terms, uh, that the affordable units remain in perpetuity, the affordable units shall not be seg, segregated from market rate units, so they can't put all of the affordable units in one corner of one building. Um, and then, any excess profit over twenty percent shall be paid to the town of Abington.
Can you just go back to that?
Yeah.
Section B, that second sentence there, does that really apply as far as exterior appearance?
Oh, yeah, you're right.
With the apartments, it's not.
Take that out. Number twenty-nine, um, the applicant shall enter into a permanent restriction regulatory agreement with the town in a form and substance reasonably acceptable to the board and its council. This is called the town regulatory agreement. This shall be recorded at the Plymouth Registry of Deeds prior to the issuance of any building permit and signed by all necessary party, including all mortgages and lien holders of record. The town regulatory agreement shall only become effective if and when the regulatory agreement with the subsidizing agency is terminated, expires, or is otherwise no longer in effect, and is not replaced with another regulatory agreement with another subsidizing agency. And it, it will require that the project remains twenty-five percent affordable, as long as the project doesn't conform with zoning. It will require that twenty-five percent shall be affordable and rented by low and moderate income housing, and it shall limit the dividend, um, the profit to the applicant. The reason why we have these is because, um, because we can't rely on DHCD. The town regulatory agreement shall constitute a restrictive covenant, it's recorded against the property, um, and then while the, um, so then while the regulatory agreement, which is between, uh, the applicant and DHCD or the subsidizing agency, while that's in effect, the subsidizing agency is responsible to monitor compliance with the affordability requirements, um, and the excess profits. And again, that's also in the regulations. Um, and then, if and when the town regulatory agreement takes effect, the affordable, affordability requirements shall be enforced by the town. And then, I put in the coverage, which is, however, this clause shall not be used or construed or otherwise exercised in conflict with the holdings of the Board of Appeals of Amesbury versus the Housing Appeals Committee or any other relevant decision law, nor shall the foregoing be deemed to limit the town's authority to enforce provisions of this comprehensive permit. At such time, the town becomes responsible for monitoring the affordability requirements for the project, the applicant shall provide the town with reasonable monitoring fee. And again, that almost, that, that doesn't happen much. DHCD takes, they'll, they'll monitor this throughout, or they're supposed to. If at any time it appears that the applicant is vi, in violation of an affordable housing restriction, the board may pursue enforcement rights. And then, uh, the town, by and through the board, the building department, or its designee shall have continuing jurisdiction over this project to ensure compliance with the terms and conditions of this decision. And, um, this is a very important, um, condition because I can tell you right now that I'm in land court right now, litigating a nineteen ninety comprehensive permit. And, and we had to prove that we had the right to enforce it, so, that's why that's there. And then, the applicant shall comply with all final approval requirements pursuant to the, um, their subsidizing agency, which they have to do anyway. So we're moving on to subsection C, construction, number thirty-seven, the condition number thirty-seven. No site activities begin prior to a pre-construction, pre-construction conference. It has to be fourteen days prior to the construction, um, and that means the demolition, um, oh, so this is wrong. I say that, um, for the purp, there's nothing on the property right now, right?
No.
Okay. For the purposes of this decision, commencement of construction shall occur prior to the demolition of the existing onsite structures. So that should change to?
Vegetation?
Well, they don't really need a pre-construction, pre-construction conference.
Groundbreaking?
Oh, yeah, foundation, something like that.
Foundation, okay.
Okay, okay. Prior to, and I'll just put in foundation and I'll figure out some words. And then, the applicant has to contact the building department in writing. Okay, and then, um, at the conference, a schedule of inspections shall be agreed upon by the applicant, the board, and other municipal officials or boards subject to the board. I didn't know if you guys wanted to keep that in or not. I mean, I don't know if, if it makes sense to agree to a...
Well, it's our agent, right? So Marshall can just agree to one thing?
Yeah. So he has to agree to inspections, a schedule of inspection. So I guess he can agree to something like?
When you do this.
Upon, yeah, okay. So that's fine. I was thinking like a calendar thing, and then that wouldn't make sense because what if they're behind or ahead, you know? Okay. Construction activity, um, so no construction activity shall occur, no building permit shall be issued until the following, uh, the recorded regulatory agreement, um, approved by town council prior execution, obtained coverage under NIPDs. They have to submit a construction management plan and a construction management schedule to the building department. Copies will go to the planning board, board of health, fire chief, police chief. Department of Public Works and the building commissioner, a stormwater pollution prevent, a SWIP, to address sediment and erosion control, um, procedures to the health department, conservation, and building, um, for maintenance for all stormwater drainage facilities, and then temporary, any temporary facilities that shall be employed to minimize or eliminate the threat of mosquitoes, essentially. And then, prior to onsite activities, shall provide an update as necessary, and then, this is all just information on the applicant, or the, or the contractor, whoever it may be, the company affiliation, the name, twenty-four-hour construction manager, um, a, a twenty-four-hour contact information. Um, municipal lien certificate, uh, certification, um, that all requ, from the applicant, that all required, federal, state, local licenses have been obtained, dig save, um, some kind of signage is in place to ensure emergency personnel can locate the site. This is all standard stuff for construction, that I'm sure they do anyway. And then, um, forty-eight hours written notice. So if, if activity on the site ceases for longer than thirty days, they have to give forty-eight hours written notice prior to restarting the work. That mainly is so the building department knows that they're restarting, so when, when people start calling. During construction, they have to follow all local, state, and federal laws. They can't, uh, regarding noise, odor, vibration, dust, and blocking town roads. They're going to use, um, at all times, reasonable means to minimize inconvenience to residents in the general area. Exterior construction other than emergency work or finishing cement shall not commence on any day before seven AM and shall not continue beyond six. Provided, however, exterior construction now, shall not commence on Saturdays before eight, eight to six, and then, um, nothing on Sundays or a state or federal legal holiday. Um, if you guys have different hours, just let me know. And then, the hours of operation are enforced by the police department. Construction activity shall include but not be limited to startup of equipment, machinery, removal of trees, grubbing, clearing, grading, filling, excavating, import or export of earth materials, installation of utilities, demolition, oh, I gotta take out that. Removal of stumps and debris, direction of new structures, um, delivery shall not commence before five-thirty AM.
Is that early?
It's a little early, yeah.
Is it too early? Six-thirty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a workday.
Six-thirty?
Yeah. They can't stop, they can't do work before seven.
But they're very close to those houses, well, and then they're...
Seven?
Seven.
Yeah, that's when they start work, right?
Yeah. The site shall be secured from unauthorized access during construction with a gate or similar structure at all access points. Such measures shall be approved by the Abington Police and Fire Departments and include provisions for emergency access, so they can't just wrap the thing.
Should you put a, um, an ending time on deliveries?
Oh, yeah, probably. Seven-thirty PM and...
Six, right? Six o'clock, six.
During construction, at the end of each workday, they have to do their erosion control measures. All debris shall be removed and disposed of in accordance with state laws. And then, we shall, the board shall be notified in writing of the final disposition of the materials. Do we need to know that? I don't think we do.
No.
I'm gonna take that out. Yeah, okay. Because it, they have to dispose of them properly anyway. You guys would just be flooded with paper. And by you guys, I mean Nancy. The applicant shall design its final plans with the following specs, they have to do ADA approval, and then, um, for forty-two B, I have all signage, including signs to promote the rental of units, shall comply with the zoning bylaws, and shall be maintained by the applicant. They're seeking a waiver on this one. So, um, should we take that out? Or should we wait till we, we'll wait till we go through the waivers, I guess? If you guys grant the waiver, we'll take it out.
Can you say that one more time, all what?
Signage, including, um, all signage on the property. They requested a waiver from the signage, from the sign bylaw, and, um, that was another one of my questions, we have no idea what they're seeking.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, no.
Okay, so we'll, we'll leave that in for now. Okay, no tree stumps or other, um, demolition debris shall be buried on the property, um, and no burning is allowed on the property. The building shall contain fire sprinkler systems that they have to, um, they have to submit a plan to the Abington Fire Chief. The fire protection system has to comply with the state building code and, because it's multi, because it's a three-story multifamily, they have to have sprinklers. Number forty-five is if, if there's... Number 45 is if, if there's blasting. And again, I don't know if there is blasting, but if there's blasting, then they have to comply with 520 CMR 13 and in accordance with the existing written regulations of the Abington Fire Department, if they have any. They cannot use explosives containing PERC. They, they have to provide videotaping of the blasting. They have to provide pre and post blasting. Is there any blasting? Okay, so let's, let's just, it'll stay in, but we don't have to go through it. There's no blasting. All staging, if there are blasting, the hours are minimized to 8 to 4. All staging areas have to be on the property. No parking on townways during construction. And then 30 days following the CO, the final CO. Well, I think they're just gonna get one CO for the whole building. I, I'll still put final because there's two buildings. Construction staging area shall be cleared and completed in accordance with the approved So, in accordance with 780 CMR 116.2.2, he should, the applicant shall make a registered architect and registered professional engineers employed by the applicant regularly accessible to the town building department staff during vertical construction. And then we go through what regular access means. It means they have to give them their name, their number, all that stuff. And then the building, the board reserves our right for the building commissioner for all of his rights under the state building code, which is, that's, that's not even necessary because he has, because it's a state regulation, so it can't be waived. This one, we, the first part of this, we already state, which is that if construction ceases longer than 30 days, then we need 48 hours notice. And then the building commissioner can require any foundation trench, structure, equipment, or other hazard be secured as necessary. Number 49, if construction is temporarily suspended during the growing season, all exposed areas shall be stabilized by seeding and mulching within 14 days. And then there's steep, slopes steeper than three to one shall be stabilized by netting and pinning during suspension of construction. Third-party inspections, number 50. The town intends to contract for civil engineering plan review and inspections that may be needed during the building permit and construction phases. The applicant shall, shall establish an escrow account in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 53G, in order to assure the contracted services are covered. The initial, there's gonna be an initial deposit of $10,000. The building department plans to hire third-party inspectors. Actually, hi, Dennis. Actually, this is not, we don't know this. If the building department is gonna hire third-party inspectors, I think they're gonna have to.
What is a third-party inspector? Someone like the wire inspector and...
Oh, yes, you're right. That's what it is. Yeah, so they won't. And then 51 is a landscape plan. I was questioning that because on my last one, did I use this as a template? They, they had a special fire inspector, but we don't need that here because they have access around all the, they have access around the buildings. A landscape plan by Massachusetts Licensed Landscape Architect is required. And then to the extent that landscaping for the project is not completed prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy, occupancy, the applicant shall provide the town with a surety, with a satisfactory surety agreement. And it will not expire unless and until it's satisfactory, replaced, or released. That's if they want to open up in the winter or something that allows them to do that. Prior to final plan endorsement, the applicant shall provide security in that, for the stormwater utility services. That's just as if he was building a subdivision roadway. It's the same kind of surety. And then we have a 25% contingency is added to the, as provided in the subdivision regulations. And then the project, this is just, 53 is about the surety. It's held by the treasurer until the treasurer is notified by the board to release it. And then he, they can also make requests to reduce the surety. Prior to, number 54, prior to commencement of any ground disturbance, clearing of vegetation or construction, the applicant's engineer shall provide Tetra Tech a detailed construction sequencing plan, and that's going to incorporate the SWIP, the proof of the NIPDs permit, and any kind of approval or requirements under the Wetlands Protection Act. Constructive management, construction management plan during each phase, if there's going to be phases. And then, which includes requirements relative and any appropriate signage and police details during the construction phase. 55, the final plans shall show the layout of erosion control devices and construction methods, sequencing, phasing, winter stabilization measures. All, this is all standard on plans. So, the applicant shall pay all reasonable fees imposed for the purpose of inspecting and monitoring compliance with the project's construction in the terms of this permit. Local, and I put in local bylaw requirements not waived by this permit because they asked for fees to be waived, so we'll get to waivers. All fill used in connection with shall be clean fill as approved by the applicable town of Abington Department or official with jurisdiction. And then we just go into what clean fill is. It's no trash, no refuse, no asphalt, all that stuff. Prior to construction, physical barriers shall be involved as needed to provide tree protection. Erosion controls and tree protection measures shall be continuously maintained throughout the course of construction. I don't think that's an issue here because it's such a, it's such a, it's such a large property, and they're only constructing on a tiny bit. That's more for if there was, they wanted to save mature trees, I don't think they are. Adjacent public streets shall be swept as needed to remove sediment and debris. Board members shall have the right and, to inspect for compliance with the final plans. We already have that.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, Patrick of 22 has that.
Showed a few times.
So, okay, so now, and we already have the lighting plan. I'm gonna take out 62, okay.
So, are you striking 60 and 61?
And 61. Yeah.
Did they request a waiver on bringing in fill? The bylaw, they did.
So, we'll get to that. Prior to the issuance of any, the applicant shall submit plans and supporting materials calculation. We already have that, too. We already have, we already have 62 also. Prior to the issuance of any building permit, the project shall submit the approved MassDOT permit to access the state highway. Subsection D, the following portions of the project shall be and remain forever private and the town of Abington shall not have now or ever any legal responsibility for their operation, maintenance, repair, or replacement. The entire onsite stormwater management system, all stormwater and water connections, lines, and equipment required from the public way to the property, sidewalks, driveways, roads, utilities, drainage systems, water system, fire protection, gas if applicable, electric, telephone, cable, and all other infrastructure shown on the approved plans as serving the project, including but not limited to plowing, sanding, snow removal, trash collection, and landscape maintenance. Property lighting, landscaping, and screening. Subsection E, sewer and water, those are just reiterated that they have to have the technical memo. I'm gonna put stamped, technical stamped, memorandum, technical stamped. Okay. Subsection G, stormwater management, which was the old 67, it's into the new 65. They're gonna have to submit a fully engineered stormwater management design, plans, calculations depicting the incorporation of isolator rows into the design as recommended by storm tech, technical representatives. They're also going to submit a stormwater report complying with state stormwater management. The use of de-icing agents tightly restricted to the absolute necessary for safety and consideration of water quality concerns. Sodium chloride is not to be used, only calcium chloride. Snow and ice shall be carefully controlled onsite to assure that any snow removed from the parking and roadway areas shall be deposited in areas shown as snow storage areas on the approved snow storage plan. No stormwater collection systems or other water collection areas shall be constructed by the applicant as part of the project. Shall hold water for more than 72 hours to prevent the breeding of mosquitoes, except for wet ponds built in compliance with MassDEP stormwater management regs. Number 70, or now 68, stormwater management conditions, these are kind of repetitive of what we already have, but they're in a list. Prior to starting the work, they have to do the final SWIP, the NIPDs. The SWIP provides all the contractors during construction and must be kept on site, must be provided to all the contractors, sorry, and it must be kept on site. They have to comply with the SWIP. They have to protect the subsurface infiltration system during construction. Post-development impervious areas shall be consistent with the impervious areas shown on the design plans. The as-built conditions shall closely match the drainage area shown on the post-development drainage map, which will be part of the stormwater report. Any imported fill will have the same drainage characteristics as the, as the existing soil. Stormwater maintenance, they have to have an O&amp;M plan. This, this all just gets into the O&amp;M plan. And then in the event the applicant or its successor fails to maintain the stormwater management system in accordance with guidelines for the O&amp;M, the town may go in and do repairs and then charge the applicant, or the owner, not the applicant, the owner. And then this is just that the O&amp;M plan will be combined into a letter-size bound document and provided, so that we have a copy.
But that says property owner, so shouldn't that be town?
Property, oh, that should probably be, no, because property owner and/or management company, I guess, right? Because they can't give one to each tenant. That would be 144 copies. Nobody reads them.
Is that's what, that's what the purpose of that is, the source?
So, everybody's aware.
Yeah.
Subsection H, general conditions, 72 or now 70, is that the applicant or rental property management company shall be responsible for proper maintenance of all accessways, sidewalks. They have to be kept accessible year-round for pedestrian and emergency access. Since it's an over 55 or over 62, they're gonna be doing that anyway. The lawn area maintenance has to be in accordance with Healthy Lawns for Healthy Families program.
Okay.
Bet you guys didn't know that existed. The, except where specifically waived, construction is in accordance with all applicable laws, et cetera. The applicant and/or the rental management company shall be permanently responsible for the, for the following, plowing, sanding, snow removal. And then we get into where the snow removal has to go. And if they can't keep it on site because of like the 2015 winter, they can talk to the fire chief and find another spot. All maintenance, repairing and maintaining all onsite ways, including drainage structures and utilities, annual inspection and cleaning of the drainage systems and the stormwater systems, and then site lighting and landscaping. The applicant shall work with the abutter located at 1009 Plymouth Street to provide enhanced screening between the access road and 1009 Plymouth Street. The applicant shall pay for the town's cost to police and fire details for the project, if any. All utilities, sewer, water shall be constructed consistent with final plans in accordance with the town of Abington requirements. All utilities shall be installed underground. The applicant shall equip each dwelling unit with a low, with low-flow toilets and high-efficiency water sense faucets and one and a half gallon showerheads to reduce water usage. Any retaining wall or fencing details shall be submitted to the building commissioner for his review and approval. Rental agreements signed by the resident shall prohibit non-residents from parking cars at the property unless the non-residents are visitors using designated visitor parking for short term. I don't think they have that. I don't think they have designated parking for visitors.
I don't remember seeing a comprehensive plan regarding parking. I mean, generally, it's assumed that, you know, people get either a limited number of spaces or a numbered, specific numbered space. You know, there's your apartment and there's your spot, or spots, or one and a half spots.
Hold on, this plan says, give me a second.
What's the data?
This is not the right plan, sorry.
Was there gonna be somebody live in?
This plan says they're only proposing 203 parking spaces.
Is that the newest one?
Yeah.
How many?
203. Started at 229.
For 144 units?
Says 227.
Right. They started at 229, and then there was a technical memorandum that they reduced two, they reduced it by two. But this, dated 227, 2019, says proposed, total number of spaces proposed 203.
Did they lose some spaces when they rearranged the snow area?
They did, I think.
Well, knowing that, they had to move, they had to make the dumpster smaller, maybe? No, that wouldn't have been it. The circle, the fire thing, yeah, definitely. That's not enough, is it?
Well, that's up to this board. The total number of spaces that they should have is 282. So, they're asking for, so, let me see here. So...
144 spaces and 202?
And we had, what, 112 one-bedroom and 32 two-bedrooms?
That's a 28% reduction. If I'm doing my math right, which is, could not, might not be true, but, so...
It's a bit of a snag.
I don't have a letter from you dated 318, no.
So, it's 1.4 spaces now?
Nancy, do we have this in the file? You know, this is why I hate when they close the hearing. March 18th, 2019, do you have the file with you? I have three letters from him. I don't have, I don't have this one.
How many two-bedroom rooms are 64?
It was 32 two-bedroom and 112 one-bedroom.
112.
So, what are you talking about?
Well, so, so really, they would need 176 parking spaces.
If everybody...
If everybody has a car, and people with the second bedroom also have a car, they need 176.
And that's assuming that like a husband...
It's like whoever, it's, it's...
I mean, something, yeah, only one car.
That's all, evidently.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, yeah, the waiver request. Oh, okay, good. Yeah. So, this is fine, but what about the parking? What do you guys want to do?
Where we're at for each...
He did request, he did request waivers from conservation.
Oh, okay.
He requests what?
He, he did request waivers from the wetland protection bylaw. Remember in the beginning, I said I didn't, I didn't have one?
You said, Amy, it's as, on these plans, as submitted, it's 202 spots now?
203 is what the table says.
So, that's still, that's a 1.4 per average, and bylaw says 2.
And the ITE traffic, the most recent study says, I think, 1.78. I have it in there. So...
Strikes me as, how many two-bedrooms are there?
32.
32.
176 total.
So, so here's the deal with parking. I think that because it's a, because it's age-restricted, I don't think that we would be looking at as many parking spaces. However, we do have testimony, verbal testimony, not written, from the director of the senior center. On the first night of the hearing... On the first night of the hearing, director of the council on aging disagrees with parking. Many people in one-bedrooms have two cars.
I mean, we're in an area without a lot of public transportation. You know, you go to Brockton, there's the bad buses and all that stuff around here. You're basically driving.
Shouldn't they have secret waiver for it?
Oh, yeah, they sought a waiver.
To knock it down to two oh three?
So that change has been on the books since February, and we just missed it?
Since February, since the plans last changed, yes. No, it has not, it hasn't come up since February. So the waiver request says, it says on C five, it says section one seventy-five dash fifty-two G, two hundred and eighty-two parking spaces required, two hundred and twenty-nine spaces proposed. Yeah, and that's on the, and in my notes, I have that they reduced two spots, so that's why I put two twenty-seven.
But now it's...
I never heard of two oh three until now.
It's a big difference.
Do we know why it was two oh three, why it went down?
We think it's because they had to, they had to redo their parking for the fire truck to get around.
Right.
And then there was also snow storage.
Snow storage, yeah.
So, at the very least, they need a hundred and seventy-six parking places, whatever about required by law. They, just if, if, if there's two-bedroom apartments, thirty-two, that's sixty-four places, and presuming that each person has a car, and then a hundred and twelve, presuming that only one person has, so at the very least, they have, have to have a hundred and seventy-six. So they have more than that, but...
There's still to be, you know, couples in a, in one bedroom who have...
Yes.
And also, you have visitors, too.
It's a real issue, you know? But is there room? I mean, we're talking about really an island. Where were they?
Correct.
Right. We're surrounded by wetlands, with a senior center.
The space is already nine feet, correct?
Yes, there is, that's a waiver.
What do we have on the...
Reduction already for the actual space.
On the back-and-forth comments, we have application material indicates a hundred and ninety-eight proposed spots, one point three eight spaces per unit, while site plans indicates two nineteen, no response provided, then we have two hundred and nineteen spaces are proposed.
Right, and then, my notes on that say only two were, only two were reduced, so that's why I put two twenty-seven.
No, this is two nineteen. This is two nineteen.
Right, and then, but, when they were describing that, they said it was only two spots, so I pushed mine back up to two twenty-seven.
Well, where do we get this two nineteen from?
I don't know, from there, from them.
Okay.
What page is that on?
This was the Tetra Tech comment back...
Yeah, on the first page.
Oh, sorry, no, this was on page, one, two, three, four, five. It's about three-quarters of the way down, oh, it's, sorry, number forty-six, comment forty-six.
It's an interesting thing with, you know, if the hearings close...
So we don't have any real, it's somewhere between two hundred and, two twenty-nine, we think, okay?
Was there ever a plan with two hundred and nineteen?
I don't, I don't see.
I think there's three plans altogether, right?
This is the second set, and this has, oh, yeah, the second set has two nineteen.
Okay, okay, so then, the third plan, okay.
Two oh three.
Two oh three, okay, gotcha.
Two oh three.
All right.
Two oh three is the final number on the final plan.
Well, what was changed on that so drastically from after that?
I thought the, I thought the fire truck revisions was one of the very first revisions made.
That's two oh three.
Initially, it was two twenty-seven, and then it went to two nineteen, and it went to two oh three.
Well, presumably, as our requests increased, as land decreased, right? Their available space decreased.
Just for parking, yes.
Yeah. I mean, this is not something they would willingly do. They would want as much parking as possible.
So is that a change in that upper right-hand corner, towards the senior center, where we're asking them to do something, or change the radius of the corner or something like that?
Well, we said snow storage in January, so why would it, why would it change, why is it the most reasonable? Did you guys read?
Yeah. I'm now the clerk.
Yeah, excellent, yes. Well, I thought you were going to be chairman. This is your last year, right?
Yeah.
After a year, Ben, after a year.
No, I am, I'm...
What if we did...
Yeah, we're on the same cycle, so I think, I was last July.
Could we do visitor parking?
So you're not coming back?
No. I mean, I was doing, the last few weeks, I was doing the news for...
They'd have like a snow emergency, like a bus park. They can't park during snow.
It's really nice that you asked me, but...
Yeah, and then they would have a...
Today's the last day. I mean, you're still, if I picked, I'd go to another day, but I don't think I'm going to pick. But, that's, you know, I was doing that, and I think there was another time, there's something else, I don't think I'm really guilty, I haven't spent such time.
Fourteen on this roll.
Well, you'll be missed.
So was this your last?
So you could have a...
I think, well, Nancy thinks I have one more.
Yeah, yeah, so they, they were unassigned, we can call it unassigned parking.
Are you still on conservation?
So they wouldn't allow it, they wouldn't assign it, but it would be there, it would be available.
It's a bit much, I suspect.
Hmm. I think the community preservation was looking for a bunch of...
So two oh three plus fourteen equals what, two seventeen?
Oh, really?
Are you guys okay with two seventeen?
Better than two oh three.
Okay.
And it's much closer to the two nineteen, or whatever we were...
All right, so wait a second, so...
So what's the number? It's two...
Two seventeen.
Okay.
Can we do that in other storage, snow storage area as well?
Well, the other storage, probably the front, it's the latest one, right?
Top right, I thought.
Yeah, this is all covered, though.
Yeah, that's all covered, now it's only here.
It's only there, that's who we took away.
Okay.
And you can't add any people that answer.
Okay. All right, so fourteen, so...
On average, what does that give them?
So two seventeen.
That brings it up to one point five.
Yeah.
That's, that's about enough.
It's not bad.
Yeah.
So signage would be there, too?
All right, so...
You guys agree with that? For the snow storage?
Yeah.
Okay, so, we're going to do fourteen spaces unassigned in the snow storage area, and that's to the south, I think, right? Snow storage, southern portion, signs, no parking during storm events, during snow events. Twenty-four hours before and after, no, no, I guess we can't do twenty-four, I'm predicting. All right, no parking during storm events, okay.
So that's a closer number to where we want to be. Everyone agree?
I do.
And I'm going to say they replaced the spaces from the original plan.
Right.
Okay, from the original plan, and that's fourteen spaces. Okay, and then that brings us to two seventeen, so I will change that also throughout the decision that we have two hundred and seventeen spaces. Okay. The building has to have the fire sprinklers, oh, wait.
Which one?
I'm on, oh, no, I, wait, wait, I went back up, sorry. We were on like sixty or seventy, right?
Eighty-two.
Eighty-two? That's a lot of conditions, huh?
You said they were gonna be.
That's really a cutback on the story.
But they, they just have to, the cars can't be there.
But I'm saying that, that what they've done is need the, the after-pocket law, you have part of that.
Right.
So, just something to think about. There are other areas over the stormwater.
Yeah, they could do it over the eastmen, too, right? Yeah, so...
So should we put something about, we have, in this decision, we have that they can only put the snow storage in designated snow area. Should we say, or area, because we have, we have a condition where if they can't fit it all, they can ask the fire chief where to put it? Should we just have it that they can put it, it's preferable to put it in the snow storage areas or designated areas by the fire chief, something like that?
Is it the fire chief's call on that?
Well, for say, it's, they can't put it in places where he can't get around it, you know what I mean?
Oh, okay, all right, yeah, all right.
Would that give them, yeah, would that give them a little attitude?
Yeah, it will, okay, so...
You just got to remember, those parking spaces that you're talking about putting in, they're going to be in, and you are taking half of the snow area that they created. So just, just on a bad winter, so...
So what they'd have to do is, when the snow starts, when the snow starts to melt, they have to push it back, so they can clear, so they can open up the spaces.
Right, okay.
It's not like he doesn't have the equipment.
Okay.
All right, sounds good.
All right. Okay, so, under waivers, I put that, with respect to the waivers, it's in exhibit, exhibit one. So we're going to go through those all. Eighty-three, if any conflict arises between waivers granted and the general and conditions, the conditions take precedence. Eighty-four, except as specifically waived by this decision, the project shall conform to all applicable local, state, federal laws, codes, regulations, standards, including but not limited to. And then we have all the building codes, including payment of all fees, and I just note that they requested a waiver for that. Wetlands Protection Act, Rivers Protection Act, wastewater regulations, EPA, DEP, Army Corps, MEPA, and then rules and regulations with DEP. Okay, and then, the applicant submitted a list of waivers. So I have the applicant listed, submitted a revised list of, wait, a revised list of requested waivers on September nineteenth and March nineteenth. I don't know why I didn't have that, maybe I do have the CONCON one in here. Okay, so then we have the record of vote, which we're going to skip over, we're at the laps, which we don't, it's just pursuant to the state law. Okay, let's go to exhibit one for waivers. So, in this instance, so we have Rich Bill and Andrew on the way, voting on this decision. So if we can have the same person make the motion and the same person make the second, that would be very, very easy, because we have...
Very much how we do it, anyway.
Okay, good, because we have thousands of these, so, and we have to do them each separately.
Thousands?
Not thousands, a lot.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're just reading the waiver?
So, yeah, so, I will read it, you guys can make up, you guys can just motion, you guys can just say so moved. So, it's a general waiver, is requested to replace the Town of Abington Planning Board with the Zoning Board of Appeals, wherever the planning board has given authority in this, in the bylaw. Procedural items administered by the planning board should be administered by the Zoning Board of Appeals. I, I wrote that this waiver should be denied, it's unnecessary. So I would put, so I would make a motion to deny the waiver as unnecessary.
Okay, I'll make a motion to deny the waiver as unnecessary.
I'll second that.
All favor?
Aye.
And the reason for that is because forty-B automatically places you in the shoes of the planning board. Okay, so now we go to the subsection number two, the zoning bylaw waivers. The first one is section one seventy-five, attachment one, use table A four, multifamily use in an R thirty zone, which is prohibited. That, the motion is to either, to grant the waiver?
Make a motion to grant.
I'll second the motion.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next one is the use table J, a special permit requirement for more than two thousand, twenty thousand square feet of development, more than fifty parking spaces, and more than four hundred daily vehicle trips. Motion to grant.
I'll make a motion to grant.
Okay.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Use table, section one seventy-five A one, requires a special permit for a multifamily project, motion to grant the waiver, maybe?
Make a motion to grant.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. One seventy-five thirty-one and one seventy-five thirty-two A three, require site plan review by the planning board and zoning board of appeals for any multifamily project. In that, in this instance, you're not stepping into the shoes of the, of the planning board, because what they're asking for is they're asking for a waiver from site plan review, which is standard.
So we're denying that?
You're granting it.
Oh, we're granting...
I mean, you're doing whatever you want.
Right, but for the project, yeah.
Sure.
They're not, they don't have to come back for site plan.
Okay, exactly.
That's what I...
So I'll make a motion to grant the waiver.
I'll, I'll still second it.
All favor?
Aye.
Subsection E, section one seventy-five, attachment two, table of dimensional and density regulations, minimum lot width, one hundred feet, one hundred and ten feet is required for a lot with a street frontage, thirty-eight feet is provided.
This was the one we had the issue on, right?
I think it's, I think, I think it's fine. It's how, it's, it's how you interpret the definition, so...
Okay, I'll make a motion to grant the waiver.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Section one seventy-five, attachment two, table of dimensional and density regulations, minimum lot frontage, one hundred and twenty, one hundred and ten feet is required, they have thirty-eight feet.
Motion to grant the waiver.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
One seventy-five, attachment two, table of dimensional and density regulations, maximum building height, thirty-five foot maximum height, forty-six foot height is proposed.
Make a motion to grant.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Letter H, article five, six, that can't be, that's not, that, you can't do, you don't do nine that way, right? Article five?
No.
So what would that be, off-street parking?
Off-street parking?
Someone has to figure out Roman numerals. What is it? One X or is it eight?
What article we're looking at?
Off-street parking and loading requirements.
Probably eight, yeah, probably just two of them.
Yeah.
Who's going to be first?
Okay, so it's a typo. So that is article eight, off-street parking and loading requirements, section one seventy-five forty-three A, one A, ten-by-eight space required, nine by, ten-by-eighteen space required, nine-by-eighteen space provided.
Make a motion to grant the waiver.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Again, article eight, that time I have five i's. Maybe it was, no, it isn't me, because it's on yours, too. Okay, so I got to take two of those out.
Romans would be mad at you for doing that.
I know. No, I didn't, never mind, I didn't. Okay, no, it's still Dan's fault. Off-street parking and loading, section one seventy-five forty-three A, two A, twenty-five foot aisle width required, and a twenty-five foot aisle width is provided.
Make a motion to grant the waiver.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Article eight, off-street parking and loading, section one seventy-five fifty-B, six landscape islands per every eighty parking spaces, a total of five landscape islands are provided.
Does that math still make sense with the...
Uh, no, wait a second, so, we have two seventeen. You don't, you don't need them. Okay, so deny, so deny the waiver is unnecessary, they don't, because...
Don't need it?
Two seventeen divided by eighty, right? That's what I'm doing? So I came, I came up with two point seven. Yeah, they're all set. Okay, so that would be, Andrew, that would just be denied as, as unnecessary.
Make a motion to deny as unnecessary.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Off-street parking and loading, or article eight, off-street parking and loading requirements, section one... loading requirements, section one seventy-five, fifty-C, division of parking areas larger than forty square feet, four, forty thousand square feet, sorry.
Make a motion to grant the waiver.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Article eight, off-street parking and loading, um...
That's going to...
The requirements, uh, parking spaces?
Two hundred and eighty-two required, two hundred and seventeen.
Seventeen, right?
Yep. Spaces proposed.
Okay.
Make a motion to grant the waiver.
I'll second that motion.
All favor?
Aye.
All right, M, section one seventy-five, thirty-two, multifamily uses, um...
Is that denied as unnecessary?
You don't have the, um, article numbers on these, that doesn't matter. One seventy-five, thirty-two, A, administration, applicant seeks a waiver of the entire section of one seventy-five, thirty-two, A. That's the whole section that, that's regarding, um, it's, it's actually, it's, it's, it's very strangely written, because it says multifamily uses, but it has to do with condominiums and, and in-law apartments under thirty-two. And there's that provision where if you have twelve condominiums, there's certain requirements, things like that, none of it's gonna apply to them.
I'll make a motion to grant the waiver.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Wait a second, so...
What is the frontage?
Thirty-two, A.
Thirty-eight feet, isn't it?
Why does he have two different ones for thirty-two?
That's what they listed, I think.
So, we should just do, we should just do a waiver from section thirty-two. Let me see, well, actually, we can't, we can only do what they request, um, so let me go back, sorry. All right, so section thirty-two, section thirty-two B, frontage, applicant seeks a waiver of the two hundred foot frontage requirement applicable to multifamily dwellings.
Motion to grant the waiver.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Um, section thirty-two, see, we could've just done a, there, a waiver from the whole section, but we have thirty-two C, density.
Motion to grant the waiver.
Thanks, okay.
I'll second.
Aye.
All favor?
Aye.
Um, thirty-two D, dimensional.
Motion to grant the waiver.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Multifamily uses, building design limits the number of units per building to twelve.
Motion to grant the waiver.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Uh, we're on R.
Yep.
Uh, one, one seventy-five, thirty-four, earth removal, um, asserts that any earth removal from the project shall be customary and incidental to the construction of the project, and that an earth removal permit from the Board of Selectment is not required. To the extent that an, an earth removal permit is required, the applicant seeks a variance. So, on this one, I normally do not recommend, um, to the extent necessary, um, waivers, but here, I, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure if they need one or not, so...
So, we just don't, you know?
I think, I think so.
Okay. Make a motion to grant the waiver.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, transit-oriented development, the applicant seeks a waiver of all requirements applicable to transit-oriented development, I don't know why there's that apostrophe, at section one seventy-five, thirty-seven.
Make a motion to grant the...
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
One seventy-five, sixty-six, buffer strips, the applicant seeks a waiver of all requirements for buffer strips in section one seventy-five, sixty-six.
Make a motion to grant the waiver.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Outdoor lighting, the applicant seeks a waiver of outdoor lighting requirements, um, section one seventy-five, sixty-seven, one, and I will pull that up for you, um...
I thought we were saying that they were required to do all the dark sky stuff.
Yeah, you did.
So, wouldn't we deny that one, then?
So, one sixty-seven, one... What did he ask for?
Lighting waivers.
From what section he wrote?
One seventy-five.
One seventy-five.
Dot one, that doesn't exist.
Well, it does. I don't understand.
But where's point one? Oh, here it is, outdoor lighting, um...
The issue with that...
It's reduce light pollution, conserve energy, preserve the night sky.
Well, the issue with that...
You guys are conditioning it that they have, that they have to apply, that they have to con, um, conform with this.
Right.
Right.
Because that affects the butters, right? There are butters here.
So, that's a deny, right?
Yeah, all right, I'll make a motion to deny the waiver.
I'll second that.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, one seventy-five, fourteen, waiver that there be no more than one principal building on the property.
It says with respect to buildings that are attached, these buildings are attached to each other, that they need them?
Are they with a bridge?
Yeah, yeah, they have a bridge, yeah.
You think that's, you think that's...
I would consider that attached.
We required that once with a in-law.
And it was, and it was, and it was considered attached, then I would deny it for, um, as unnecessary.
Okay, I'll make a motion to deny as unnecessary.
Where's the maintenance building?
Did you, do you wanna think about that for a second?
No, 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 I was thinking of the maintenance building, but that's not principal. It's a principal building. The requested waiver as...
Again, it's because the buildings are attached.
So, let me go back, give me a second, I'll go back, and I will put that they are attached.
Right.
So, I will put, um, in procedural history, on number one, um, in two attached buildings. Okay?
Okay.
Okay, um... Okay, so, we are on... We're on, let me see here, um, W, one seventy-five, thirty-one, uh, waiver of the requirement that no removal of sand and gravel shall be made without the approval of the Town Board of Selectmen.
What about the last one?
Did we vote on...
Can I do that one?
We didn't vote yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. I wrote denied as unnecessary.
I'll make a motion to deny as unnecessary.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, now, I'm sorry, now...
No problem.
W is one seventy-five, thirty-one, waiver of the requirement that no removal of sand and gravel shall be made without the approval of the Town Board of Selectmen.
That's, is, that's still in there? That's still bylaw?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
What are we doing, Grant?
Uh, just wait a minute, the board, ready by... So, we're gonna waive that, that's what they're asking for, okay?
All right, I'll make a motion to grant the waiver.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we, can I just say one thing? Um, the, we wrote in two seventeen on the parking, is that okay? We can do that? We changed it, is that all right?
Oh, yeah, we're conditioning it.
Okay, all right.
Yep. Uh, X, section one seventy-five, thirty-four, waiver of the floodplain and wetland protection district's requirements.
Make a motion to grant the waiver.
I'll seconding that.
All favor?
Aye.
Y, one seventy-five, forty-seven, B, waiver of the requirement that no driveway shall be within fifty feet of any driveway located on an adjoining lot.
Move to grant the waiver.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Z, one seventy-five, forty-nine, uh, waiver of the requirements that lighting design for the project must be approved by the building inspector.
We...
Aye.
Yeah.
Deny.
Make a motion to deny the waiver.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Uh, AA, section one seventy-five, fifty-six, D, and fifty-eight, waiver of the requirements with respect to signage for the pro, for the project. We don't have any information on signage, on what they require.
Right, so we're denying that?
Make a motion to deny the waiver.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
One seventy-five, sixty-five, waiver of the requirement that upon completion of construction of the project, there shall be an average minimum of four trees per dwelling unit, at least two within fifty feet of each dwelling unit, and such trees shall be a minimum of twelve feet hi, in height, and two and a half inches in diameter above ground level. That's literally impossible.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it's a lot of trees.
That's, they'd be creating a forest.
I'll make a motion to grant the waiver.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
All right, CC, uh, section one seventy-five, seventy-six, B, one, requirement that no building permit may be issued without the approval and endorsement of the Water Department, Sewer Department, and Board, and/or Board of Health. I would...
Make a motion to deny the waiver.
It's already required in the, in the, um, decision.
Okay, all favor?
Aye.
One seventy-five, seventy-six, C, requirement that the applicant submit a plot plan to the building inspector. This is, this, all he has to do is submit that.
Okay.
So, he, that, this is easy. So, I would deny.
Make a motion to deny the waiver.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
EE, one seventy-five, seventy-seven, waiver of the applicant's requirement to submit site, to submit, submit a site plan for review and approval, including without limitation the requirement of a public hearing in accordance with MGL forty-eight, nine, and eleven, and the approval of such site plan pursuant to the adjusted step forth in one seventy-five, seventy-seven. I don't know what he's looking at here.
Yeah, could you?
Oh, that's site plan review, we already, um, we already exempted him from site plan review.
To deny as unnecessary?
Deny.
I'll make a motion to deny as unnecessary.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, um...
The waiver fees?
Fees by, established by the Board of Selectmen.
Make a motion to deny.
All...
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
General bylaw, this is subsection three, general bylaw waivers, a waiver of the requirement of chapter one thirty-four, the town's general bylaw with respect to soil removal.
What's that one?
Remove it up.
Isn't there one, if you move in too much dirt, you gotta go to planning, or something like that?
There's one if you're bringing in fill, you have to go to planning.
And there's one if you're taking out, so you gotta go to selectmen.
Something tells me they're gonna be moving a bunch of dirt around.
Thirty-four is soil removal.
No persons shall remove any soil alone from a premises or from any land not in public use unless such removal is authorized by a permit issued by the Board of Selectmen, except for the continued operation of the same partial of existing sand and gravel pit, except when incidental to and reasonably required in connection with the construction of a legal approved infrastructure or approved subdivision.
Not the same of...
So, this is actually, this wouldn't even be required, they're not asking for a waiver of this requirement, because the requirement is just that they need permission from the Board of Selectmen, but you guys step into the shoes of the Board of Selectmen.
I'll make a motion...
And you guys have already given them permission with the, with the decision.
Yeah, you're right.
So, I'll make a motion to deny as unnecessary.
I'll second.
Favor?
Aye.
What is stretch energy code?
That is the... It's a higher energy code, standard...
We just, we just adopted that a couple of years ago.
You can comply with that easily, right? Yeah, you have to, it stays, so just deny it.
All right, I'll make a motion to deny the waiver.
As unnecessary?
As unnecessary.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
This is all requirements promulgated by the Board of Health?
I've spelled, I've, uh, I've spelled unnecessary like fifteen different ways.
Right.
Yeah, this one's, this one's problematic, because the, um, regulations state that you have to list out your waivers so that, with some specificity. So, they're requesting a general waiver of all requirements promulgated by the Health Department. In this instance, they don't have a septic system, so the only requirements technically that they're going to have to comply with are really public health and safety requirements, like the mosquitoes and things like that, so...
No sense in...
I don't, I don't know if you guys wanna waive that.
I'll just make a motion...
And then trash and stuff like that, so...
Make a motion to deny the waiver.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
State building code waivers, you guys cannot, so I wrote that, um, I wrote deny the requested waiver, um, because it's a state. And then fees, so that's, we're ba, we're down to subsection six, fees, waivers...
We have to vote?
Should we vote on...
You should vote on that, just cover us.
On V?
Yeah.
VA, make a motion to deny the waiver.
Okay.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
And then B, Building Inspection, Inspeccional Services Department, fees, waivers.
Oh, wait, we didn't do A, V one, um...
C, A, one, A, wait.
Wait, V A.
Six, A.
Six A.
Six A, do six A, I'm sorry.
All right, make a motion to, uh, deny six A.
And then six B?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
C are the, uh, water and, um...
I'll always start to do six B.
Six B.
Make a motion to deny six B.
All favor?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, make a motion to deny six C.
Aye, second.
All favor? All favor?
Aye. Make a motion to deny six D.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Wow.
Oh, that's right, sorry.
Whoever it's, oh.
It's not. All right, so let's put that up with general bylaws.
Did we skip one, or is that just something?
Wasn't put in or?
Then you have that in, in, not X, but.
Floodplain.
W. No, W, sorry, X. Weaver of floodplain and wet.
Yeah, well, that's under the zoning boat, that's under the zoning code. So it's going to have, it's going to be under general bylaw waivers, so subsection three, we have A, we have B, and we're gonna do C. Okay, so it is section one seventy-one of the general bylaws titled wetland protection, to the extent that section one seventy-one imposes stricter requirements or procedures than, than that of chapter one thirty-one, section forty of the state wetlands protection act.
What page are you on, Amy?
I'm not, I'm, I don't have it in there, so I'm looking at his waiver request from March eighteenth. So I'll put it in. I'll put this in.
Okay, just say it again, say.
Okay. Section one seventy-one of the general bylaws titled wetland protection, to the extent that section one seventy-one imposes stricter requirements or procedures than that of the wetland, the state wetlands protection act.
Make a motion to grant.
So they're saying they wanna live by state rules and downtown rules if.
They wanna waive the local regulations.
Got it.
Which are more stringent than the state, but they still have to apply by, they still have to follow the state.
Okay.
All right.
Make a motion to grant the waiver.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Then you'll put that in there?
I will.
Is there anything else we're missing? Anything at all, or anything you think of?
Don't you think I thought of everything I drafted, thirty pages?
On record, on record, I'm just throwing it out there as your chairman.
I don't.
I am just throwing it out there for last.
Thirty-three pages.
There was nothing, there was, so there was no waiver for them bringing fill in. That's a separate.
Is it a separate?
Yeah.
Bylaw? I, I don't have one.
Whatever there is for that, it's still up to apply, but it's not a big deal.
See why I throw things out?
I, I thought they had for.
I thought they had. I thought it was just removal.
But it, but the wording isn't removal. It's a, it's a vague wording.
Wait, is that for, is that that dumping one?
Yeah, I thought we said that didn't apply.
It does, yeah, that's a.
It was forty-nine.
Yeah, it is forty-nine.
Yeah.
So it's.
They still have to go before slack removal.
Now, that's the one that we had to deal with on the Route eighteen project, remember?
Oh, yeah.
We already kinda wrote this into the conditions too, right?
Well, W is sand and gravel.
Yeah, the planning board determines if appropriate grant to permit allowing the fill material to be placed.
What's that section?
Forty-nine, forty-nine dash one, permit to dump required.
Section, section forty-nine?
Forty-nine, of the general.
Yeah, I don't see it in here as a general bylaw request.
No person shall dump or allow to be dumped any fill material on any property in the town of Abington in excess of one hundred yards without first receiving a permit therefore from the planning board.
Uh, they changed that, right, to the board of.
No, they've changed from the board of selectmen to the planning board.
That's right.
Oh, so I don't have the most updated one.
For the purposes of this bylaw, the term fill material shall include pre-debris, refuse, sand, gravel and other types of earth or other types, other materials of any kind.
So it doesn't even fall under us, is that what you're saying?
Well, it would.
Under comprehensive, it would.
There was no waiver from this, so you guys would be the planning board.
In this instance.
In this instance. So they're gonna have to get a permit from you guys. Because it says you need a butter list, certified, three hundred plot plan description, the amount of fill.
And we can't give them something they haven't asked for.
No, we cannot.
Well, I, I think that when they drafted these waivers, they were looking at the old rule, which was the slack.
But that's one seventy-five, thirty.
No, they are, they specifically stated that that was one thirty-four, which is a different section. Um, they're gonna have to seek a modification to the permit.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, I don't.
Do you want us to vote on that, or do we have to vote on that, or is it gonna be something written up?
They have an.
No, there's nothing to vote on. It's not, it wasn't requested, so they can just, they can just seek a modification when the time comes.
Okay.
It's like to reconsider something like that.
Anything else, guys? Anything else you think of?
So do we have to vote on this?
Yeah, you gotta vote, so hold on.
Okay.
So now we go to um. Where is it? Page, it is page two, twenty-five. So on May ninth, the board on a motion made by blank, seconded by blank, voted XXX to approve the comprehensive permit application of Abington Investments LLC or its nominee to allow for development as conditioned herein at one oh, one five Plymouth Street. And then the board has complied with all statutory requirements for the issuance of this comprehensive permit. A copy will be filed with the town clerk. And then the grant of this comprehensive permit hereunder is dependent upon compliance with all of the conditions set forth. Comprehensive permit shall be a master permit, which shall subsume all local permits and approvals normally issued by local boards unless waived. And then this basically just says upon presentation of this comprehensive permit, they can get their, they can start with their funding through mass housing. And then on May ninth, two thousand nineteen, the board voted to authorize the chairman to sign this decision on behalf of the board, so you have two votes to do.
So I'll make a motion to approve the comprehensive permit application of Abington Investments LLC or its nominee to fault, to allow for development as conditioned herein at ten fifteen Plymouth Street.
I'll second that motion.
All favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to authorize Chairman Rich Negreli to sign this decision on behalf of the board.
I'll second that motion.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. Save this before I lose everything I gave. We have until we have until the nineteenth to file this, which is a Sunday. We'll file it, um, we'll file it next week, Rich. You're around, you're not going anywhere.
I'm around next week.
Excellent. Okay. So I'll get it to Nancy, sign, in final form.
Okay, and then I'll sign that paperwork.
Yep, you can just sign it, and then it just goes to the town clerk's office and the applicant and all that.
No problem.
Do we have anything else we need to do on the record?
I don't think so, because we closed the hearing, at the last hearing.
Okay.
And we voted.
All right.
Have you ever skipped anything? Everything looks good to you?
I don't have any additional emails from anyone.
Okay.
So I guess we're good.
All right.
All right, so I will make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that emotion.
All favor?
Aye.